...businessmen and commercial property owners in the corridor. Therefore, to avoid travesty, a four-lane option from Wadsworth to Sheridan must be considered. Feasible options would include four lanes plus center lane, as well as four lanes only with the turn lanes at critical intersections and parking where feasible. I endorse a four-lane option as the only means to restore the normal and desirable pattern of traffic flow on the residential streets surrounding West 38th Avenue east Wheat Ridge. Thomas Evans Slattery.
Thank you. I'm going to pick up the sheet so that I can read the names. Since we have a, our regular clerk isn't here, she asked me to follow the order of the, of the names. Oh, good, Patrick's going to get it for me. So I'm going to call your names and please ask you to come forward, do spell your last name anyway, and give us your address. And I'm going to start out with Mike Gothier. Yes, please. And do we allow three minutes?
Just for the record, my name's Mike Gothier. It's G.A.U.T.H.I.E.R. I live at forty-six sixty Otis Street, Wheat Ridge. I also happen to have a business on Thirty-Eighth, which is Wheat Ridge Liquor, and I've been there for ten years. And thanks for allowing us to speak this evening, and welcome, everybody, citizens, city council. Anyway, right to the point. I know there's a lot of things on the agenda. I said I would like to speak about the number two, which is the Thirty-Eighth Avenue Corridor Plan. And my comments would be that I think what's been done so far has shown success. And the marketing of the area, the Ridge at Thirty-Eighth, is a well-known and award-winning marketing strategy. I think if you look at the facts of the, of the strategy so far, which was originally to increase sales tax revenue in the area and to bring in new businesses, both of those things have happened. I know there's a lot of emotion and concern about the road diet, as we call it. This was not something that was arbitrarily enacted. Somebody didn't just go to a seminar and re-stripe the street when they got home. That's not how it happened because I was there. And I also object to people who come in my store and say that things were done without their opinion. I said, "Well, I went to almost every one of those study sessions as a stakeholder, and there's a lot of people that are against it that never came to those meetings and voiced their opinions." So now that we're this far down the road, I think it would be a shame to turn around and go back the other direction. And if the road diet is such an issue about the whole plan, I would hate to lose everything or throw the baby out with the, with the bathwater, as they say, just because of that. I think maybe an abridged plan might be a compromise or a consensus, as George said in his article. Maybe we can just look at it in a smaller segment of the Thirty-Eighth Avenue Corridor, not the whole thing like it is now. Tell me when I have enough time to...
Forty-five seconds.
Wrap it up. Okay. So I think there is a consensus. I think there's an opinion, and maybe I got that feeling from what I read in George, his article in the Gazette, that somehow people feel that they weren't included. I, I think if you weren't included, you weren't paying attention, and you didn't take the time or make the effort to come and be included. So I think my recommendation is to move forward and, and stick with the plan, which was the Neighborhood Revitalization Strategy of two thousand and five. It was adopted by the council in two thousand and eleven, which was the Thirty-Eighth Avenue Corridor Plan, and I don't see any reason to do anything different because I think it's proven that by the facts that it's a success. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you, Mike. Janice Hoppe, followed by Kristi Thompson.
Janice Hoppe, H.O.P.P.E., seventy-eighteen West Thirty-Eighth Avenue, Wheat Ridge, eight-hundred-and-thirty-three. I, along with my husband, own Compass Construction. And in two thousand and ten, just a brief history, in two thousand and ten, we were looking, we were in the Berkeley area, and we were looking for a place to move our office because we had grown out of our place on Forty-Fourth and Tennyson. And some of you have already heard this story, but I'm going to keep going anyways. We looked in Denver, we were looking at a lot of places in Denver, and we were actually working across the street at Family Tree and saw our building, that is now our building, across the street, and it was a hot mess, to put it nicely. And we were looking around in the neighborhood, and we thought, "Well, maybe this," but everywhere you looked down the road, it was for lease or for sale. Empty buildings everywhere. And we talked to our real estate agent, one of our partners at the Forty-Fourth and Tennyson property, and they had the NRS. So we looked through the NRS and saw that there was a vision and that there was a quest to move forward and that there was going to be progress coming soon to the area. So we decided to go ahead and purchase that building. We purchased it in two thousand and ten. We didn't officially open and move into it until January two thousand and eleven. We've been there since. Since we've purchased the building, I joined Wheat Ridge Twenty-Twenty and the Board of Directors. I sit in the Wheat Ridge Business District at the pleasure of city council, and I'm a member of the Ridge at Thirty-Eighth Leadership Committee, and we moved our residence to Wheat Ridge. So we didn't just move our business here, we went all in. The reason why we went all in is because of the vision and because of the way that Wheat Ridge was moving. And so I would really, really like to encourage you to maintain forward progress on Thirty-Eighth Avenue. Please do not re-stripe it back to five lanes. Trying to walk back to my office after dropping my car off at BNF Tire and cross the street is like a game of Frogger when it, people are going fifty miles an hour across five lanes. So please maintain the small community feel with the three lanes and the, sorry, and the, and the pedestrian-friendly feel. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe I called for Kristi Thom- Thompson, followed by Monica Duran.
Kristi Thompson, T.H.R.I.S.T.I., Thompson, T.H.O.M.P.S.O.N. I live at thirty-two hundred J Street in Wheat Ridge. As near as I can tell, voting doesn't matter in Wheat Ridge because Two V was defeated in November, and the voters that elected you to represent us, to represent us, voted to put the road back to four or five lanes. Now there's a new suggestion, leaving it the way it is, from Uppam to Marshall. Again, this is not what the people voted for in November. Thank you.
Monica Duran, followed by Herb Schellref, or something like that.
I am actually going to read on behalf of someone who could be here tonight. Her name is Cindy Beardsley. She's at four thousand Depew Street. Parking along Thirty-Eighth is ridiculous. Also, when I do have to go west on Thirty-Eighth from Depew, the parking spots on the road are very seldom used. Most of the businesses have their own lots, their own lots, so it was a waste of a roadway. Moving traffic in the new townhomes on Thirty-Eighth and Depew, that will create even more traffic on an already slower roadway due to only two lanes. Townhomes there are another sore subject for me. They are, they're way too close to the road. It makes Thirty-Eighth very dark. I don't know how the variance was approved. Sheridan to Depew. I think two lanes from Sheridan west to Depew, then cutting it into one lane at Chase is dangerous. A lot of people driving don't realize they have to move over a lane, and it creates a big bottleneck. I have seen many near misses at this intersection. Also, why is there a right turn on Chase and not Depew in the first place where there is a light? Perhaps the city council of Wheat Ridge wanted to make Thirty-Eighth more of a marketplace/neighborhood kind of street, but Thirty-Eighth is too wide for that. In my opinion, you are not going to make it any narrower to have that kind of feel by getting rid of the traffic lanes. It still isn't narrow enough. If you compare it to Highlands area on Thirty-second or Gaylord or South Pearl Streets in Denver, it is too wide and more of a main thoroughfare. Thank you.
Thank you. Herb, and then Britta Fisher.
Thirty-nine hundred Garrison. White and I moved in here in nineteen sixty-three. Built our home, raised our children, great place to live, and I think we should keep it that way. Thirty-Eighth is a disgrace the way it is today. It tells you no rather than yes to come into the city. You don't know where to, where to go, what the parking is. It's ridiculous. Put it back the way it was, and I know a few years ago, people spoke of this and say, "Well, it's been a long-term ordeal that we want to do." No, maybe a few, but you had a vote on it. You brought up this tax thing to do the street, and it was voted down, no question about it. And I don't know why the council hasn't reacted. You know, we voted for you people to come in here, and you should react what the people want, not what you want. It's what the people want here. And if they vote in something by a good margin, you should react to it. And I think any more expense on that is a real disgrace, and let's keep the city the way it was supposed to be, and let's get rid of that Thirty-Eighth and put it back the way it should be.
Thank you. Britta, followed by Charlotte.
Hi, my name is Britta Fisher, F.I.S.H.E.R., and I live in District One. I'm also the executive director for Wheat Ridge Twenty-Twenty. We're a nonprofit organization that is volunteer-powered, staff-supported, and board-directed to help create an even more vibrant and sustainable community here in Wheat Ridge. Wheat Ridge Twenty-Twenty has actually kind of grown up with this idea of enhancing our Main Street. We were part of the NRS, the Neighborhood Revitalization Strategy, that was adopted in two thousand and five, that also called for really creating a Main Street in Wheat Ridge. When you look at Ridge at Thirty-Eighth and look at the businesses and look at the details in this memo, it's pretty clear that there have been some signposts of success. I hear sometimes that, you know, people don't go to Thirty-Eighth Avenue because of the restriping project and the road enhancement. However, our sales tax certainly shows that people are spending time and money. It's very compelling to see this economic diversification that's happened along Thirty-Eighth Avenue. Now Thirty-Eighth Avenue is not the biggest sales tax generating area in all of Wheat Ridge, but showing that kind of success and creating that Main Street is really important to the heart of the community. We've also been getting a lot of accolades as a community. It's been great to read in Denver Post, Fifty-two eighty, going to conferences, and people are talking about Wheat Ridge. When I first moved here ten years ago, when I would say I lived in Wheat Ridge, people would say Westminster? And now, when I say Wheat Ridge, they know that we're our own town, and they know that we've been doing things, that we've been investing in ourselves, and it's been a clear sign to the rest of the metro area that it's not hard to get people to come here and want to check out what's going on at Ridge at Thirty-Eighth. I also wanted to just comment that the home values have exploded in this area. Obviously, the market has gone up and, and demand is high, but a home that was just marketed a block off of Ridge at Thirty-Eighth had over seventy showings, forty people at the open house, and multiple offers, twenty to thirty thousand dollars over asking price. That's the power of how we're realizing this bump. Wheat Ridge doesn't always realize that value increase the rest of the way the Denver market does. So I would just urge you on behalf of Wheat Ridge Twenty-Twenty to keep moving forward that Main Street is a part of a vibrant and sustainable community, and I hope we can work together to realize that. Thank you.
Thank you. Charlotte, followed by Joan Blanchard.
I live at four thousand one Marshall Street. I don't know how many of you on council live close to Thirty-Eighth Avenue that you have to get onto Thirty-Eighth to go anywhere. If I'm on southbound Marshall and I want to go east on Thirty-Eighth, I usually have to wait for at least twenty, if not thirty, cars coming one way, and then I have to check for going the other way before I can go across. I avoid Thirty-Eighth. I go a different direction. The people that come to visit me do not go Thirty-Eighth. And I know that sales taxes might have increased, but I don't go to bars, I don't go to pubs, and I don't get any tattoos. There have been many near misses at my corner between the buses and cars that are unfamiliar with Thirty-Eighth. When the bus stops at Marshall, they come around the bus so they don't have to wait. I'm in the left-hand turn lane. Somebody could get killed or hurt, and I don't want it to be me, and I don't want to be anybody in my, in my community. Please put it back. I can't say anymore. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Joan. Kim. Oh, wait, that was Charlotte. Kim, Joan, yeah.
I live at thirty-two ninety-five Kendall Street, which is on the corner of Thirty-third and Kendall. There has been a twenty percent drop in traffic on Thirty-Eighth because it's so slow. As a result, people are taking shortcuts through neighborhoods. I had someone end up in my backyard going through my fence and tearing out a lot of my trees, and fortunately, they weren't killed but could have been. And these were people that had never been on that street, which also has a rise and a dip, and you could not see it. There's no hazard signs on Thirty-third, but they're taking shortcuts because Thirty-Eighth is so slow. I also noted that on Pierce Street, somebody went through the fence at a residence that was pretty serious. So people taking shortcuts through the side streets are endangering the neighborhood, and I would request, please, consider going back to the original size of Thirty-Eighth Avenue so that people can move through a street which is actually a thoroughfare that will move you from one city to another very quickly, if it is in going back to the same size it was before. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Joan. Kim Calomino, followed by Ron Kiefer.
Kim Calomino, C.A.L.O.M.I.N.O., forty-seventy Dover Street. Thank you, Madam Mayor and council members, for the opportunity to speak. Pardon me, because I will read my comments. Ever since the adoption of the Neighborhood Revitalization Strategy in two thousand and five, I have seen and been involved in, as many of you know, in the public process that has set the direction for creating a Main Street in Wheat Ridge. I want to thank previous councils and this council for adopting forward-thinking plans like Envision Wheat Ridge and the Thirty-Eighth Avenue Corridor Plan that has attracted businesses and residents to our city. There have been many, many meetings, study sessions, and city council meetings that have helped us get to the point in, this point in developing our Main Street. I'm pleased to report that my own children, young adults now, have actually found places to hang out, enjoy, bring their friends from other communities, and spend time in the communities they were raised. And I don't think this has been the case in the past, and, and they're spending time and their dollars on Thirty-Eighth Avenue. We want to encourage that kind of stay-in-your-community idea among our young people. And I might mention, many of my friends who don't live here are following Facebook and joining Wheat Ridge Facebook communities to find out what's going on here, and come to the community events and come and join the gathering places that have developed on Thirty-Eighth Avenue. So it's not just us, it's all around us. Tonight, we see the information that this foresight and planning has, that has been a good investment. Sales tax collection is up, is diversifying the economic base for our community, and we need that investment to grow and continue. Car traffic is traveling slower and closer to the thirty-five mile an hour change speed limit and makes it feel safer for bikes and pedestrians. The Denver metro area is abuzz about what's happening in our community. The Denver Post, Fifty-two eighty, are posting our events, talking about us, and we're not being talked about as the other W-city, Wheat Ridge, or Westminster any longer. I participate in a lot of the online dialogues, and some suggest, some suggest that we can have it all. This solution is, as you know, not possible. Through many years of public meetings, I understand that this is not true, and I believe you do as well. You are setting a direction and making policy with constraints. There is not unlimited right of way, or resources and priorities must be made, and you must make them. Let's continue forward in building on the work of many citizens, staff, and council to realize our vision for a thriving and walkable Main Street. Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. Ron, followed by M. Dausch on Otis Street. Oh, thank you.
Ron Kiefer, K.I.E.F.E.L., thirty-eight seventy-five Field Drive. I continued, I'd like to speak in continued support of the NRS and the Thirty-Eighth Avenue Corridor Plan, along with the Envision Wheat Ridge Plan. There has been a lot of public process, I feel, in this. It started in two thousand and five. I've attended many of the meetings and open sessions, study sessions, so I'm a little surprised when I hear that it's been a closed process because I feel that it's been presented quite a bit. I also look at the sales tax revenue of the corridor, and just looking at the sales tax comparison charts in this latest document, Thirty-Eighth Avenue annual increase was four-hundred-and-thirty-thousand dollars from two thousand and eleven to two thousand and fourteen. From two thousand and thirteen to two thousand and fourteen, it was two-hundred-and-thirty-thousand dollars in sales tax revenue. So I don't see that, people aren't going to the corridor, they're going to the corridor and spending money. Wheat Ridge Cyclery is, you know, happy to be part of this and excited to see this kind of growth go on. And since business is up, I don't know why we're rushing to change the corridor. You know, these kind of plans, they take time. Certainly, there's hiccups, certainly, there's problems, but, you know, we have new businesses investing in this corridor, and we see Clancy's just moved in here, the New Kidney Center is there. New businesses have come to this corridor because of this vision and this plan, and so I believe that we should move forward with it. And then finally, I'd like to speak to the bike paths. We appreciate that the bike paths got put in along Thirty-Eighth Avenue, and I'd hate to see those get killed from Pierce down to Benton. The longer that we continue with these routes, the more people are going to use them for connectivity. We're keeping the traffic controlled and slower on Thirty-Eighth, yes, you know, thirty-five miles is the speed limit, and having the bike lanes not just go from Uppam to Pierce, which I don't think does as much to encourage cycling as if you continue those down and keep the same kind of configuration that we have. So thank you.
Thank you. The other party, I couldn't, D.A.S.O.V.I.C.H., thirty-five twenty Otis. Perhaps they decided not to speak? Okay, I'll move on to Vivian Voss. Followed by Teo Nicolais.
Vivian Voss, V.O.S., six-nine-two-zero, West Forty-seventh Place. I would guess maybe the sales tax increase, whether it's large or small, touted as an increase is probably because of three or four large businesses that are on Thirty-Eighth Avenue and not even in the Main Street corridor that we're talking about, other than maybe Wheat Ridge Cyclery. I would guess that's probably King Supers and the Auto Store that's down on the east end of the Thirty-Eighth Avenue closer to Sheridan. And I'm wondering if maybe with all of this memorandum talk that we're seeing here, forty-eight pages, that we might be putting the cart before the horse as we're not actually dealing with the lane, number of lanes that were four, three, four, or four driving lanes with two bicycle and some turn lanes. Also, I'm a little confused by the NRS strongly urges the city to pursue a destination Main Street. I'm not even sure we've talked about what is Main Street. Maybe that's an assumption on some people's parts as to what that is. The NRS emphasizes the need to attract strong households. I'm not even sure what is meant by a strong household. Made of brick and not wood, would that be strong? Ultimately, the provision of an appealing pedestrian-oriented destination, such as Thirty-Eighth Avenue, helps to create that household demand. And I'm wondering why we're changing a major thoroughfare that was four to five lanes into a pedestrian-oriented destination. And also, on the vote of nine million that was defeated to spend to widen the sidewalks, the assumption is that would narrow the streets. Thus, the vote for no on that would also assume they did not want the narrow of the streets. Let's please change it back to the four to five lanes, something more than what we have now. Thank you.
Thank you. And Teo?
Try it again. Thank you, Mayor Jay, and, and thank you for, for everyone who's, who's taken a part in these very thorough discussions. My name is Teo Nicolais. That's N.I.C.O.L.A.I.S. I live at thirty-three hundred Zenobia. I work at Harvard University, and I teach several classes, but some of them, two of them which might be relevant here, are Principles of Real Estate and Real Estate Finance and Investment Fundamentals. I'm on the Board of Directors of the Department Association of Metro Denver. I'm an Urban Land Institute member. I'm, I'm basically, I'm a, I'm a real estate nerd, and that's why I'm so interested and so excited about this plan and about what you guys are doing. If this study session on creating a lively and vibrant city street were not here, but instead in my Harvard classroom, the text I would assign would be from Jane Jacobs, who is the legendary urban theorist who looked at doing exactly what we're trying to do here. And since we have such a limited time, I'm going to keep it to three minutes, I promise, the, the thing I'm just going to note is one of the central themes that we see in cities across the United States about creating vibrant places. And this is what Jane Jacobs said. She says, "A vibrant place must ensure the presence of people who go outdoors on different schedules and are in a place for different purposes, but who use many common facilities." And one of the most common facilities that's used by public and private alike are the sidewalks. I want you to think about Laramore Square or Tennyson, which has been referenced earlier tonight, or the Pearl Street Mall and Boulder, and ask yourselves, what do they have in common? What they have in common is a bustling pedestrian activity. And bustling pedestrian activity is not something that happens by accident. It happens when you create a safe, inviting sidewalk in a place where, where people can stroll, whether they be cyclists, joggers, or if you're talking about drivers, we want to think about non-threatening drivers. A successful street must be made to human scale, not vehicle scale. Charlie Brown noted that "nothing takes the taste out of peanut butter quite like unrequited love." And I can assure you that nothing takes the taste out of craft beer and gourmet pizza and fresh-baked cupcakes than noisy road traffic that's dangerous to the pedestrians who are looking to enjoy the space. I would assure you that when you're establishing, what you're establishing here with this plan is going to lead to the Wheat Ridge Renaissance that we're looking for. The most contentious issue here, of course, is the reduction of vehicle speed. And so briefly, I'll just say this, that a city policy like this should not be aimed at cultivating the transient vehicular traffic or the vehicular drivers, but rather the economic drivers, the pedestrians, the, the people that are frequently restaurants and frequently, frequenting stores. Those economic drivers are the ones that matter. And if you need additional food for thought, I'll leave you with this, and that is to say that there is a name for a city which thrives on creating an opportunity for cars to move through as quickly as possible, and that name is a truck stop. Thank you very much for your time. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Teo. Jerry, Jerry Nealon, I think it is, yes?
Hi, I'm Jerry Nealon, N-E-A-L-O-N, business owner, property owner, 6770 West 38th Avenue, and also I have rental properties in Wheat Ridge as well. I've been here for quite a long time. My grandfather built a building on 38th Avenue, and we've seen it ebbs and flows, you know, things go up, things go down. But seven or eight years ago, 38th Avenue was just turning into a dump, I was about ready to pack up and move, sell the building and go. Instead, I decided to invest some money, revitalize the store, and I just, I wouldn't keep it in an area that looks nice, I want a place that's going to be inviting, I want people to want to come here. I don't want to have them come to my store in the middle of I-70 or unsafe road. But we've been involved with Steering Committee, the Leadership Committee, committee after committee, we've had meeting after meeting, everybody has had a chance for input, we've took input, we've spent a lot of money on counseling, not counselors, what do you call those people, consultants? Need counseling, probably. But consultant after consultant, and we need to listen to the professionals. You know, they know what's going on, they listen to everybody, they put the facts, the figures together, and they came up with a plan. And I think it needs to really go through. I'd hate to see anything go backwards from here. We put a lot of time, effort, money, it's time to move forward. I know it's, you can never please everybody. I don't care if we go back to 10 lanes, five lanes, whatever, doesn't make any difference. Nobody, we're never going to please everybody, so let's just do the right thing, let's move forward, we've had the plan in place, all the meetings in place, let's go for it. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. I have one more person here, Debra Wilson.
Hello, I'm Debra Wilson, and I'm an attorney that lives over 36 in Irving, and I'm also a new property owner in the Wheat Ridge community. For 17 years, I had a law office in downtown Denver with anywhere from 15 to 20 employees. And we took the step in 2013 of looking around to decide where to move our business, because Denver is just so congested, and we wanted something with more charm, and someplace that maybe is walkable or bikeable for my employees, and a lot of them live on the West Side. So, in 2013, we found the building over at 41st and Harlan. It's a professional office building, 14,000 square feet. We've got tenants in there, and I've got about 14 employees right now. And the reason that we came was because of this plan. And I just want to say that, you know, we did the research, we saw the dreams of the council and the community, and we liked it. I think that, I look forward to five years from now, 10 years from now, on 38th, more and more going to the restaurants, depending on my employees go down there, we already do, but we'll do more and more of that, more bikeability and walkability in the community is absolutely something that sold it for my, for my business and bringing our tax dollars here. And so I want to encourage the council and the community to work toward this plan, and thanks so much.
Thank you. May I call Gene Myers?
Hi, my name is Gene Myers with Newtown Builders. So, I'm the CEO and owner of Newtown Builders, and we are a builder on 38th, and I'm sure many of you have seen our townhomes that are under construction there. We have eight people who have closed right on 38th. And I was trying to think what to talk with you about, because we developers come and go, don't we? You do know that. And we're here, and we're not going anywhere, because we made an investment, and we'll see it through. I must say that the vision for 38th and what's been realized of that vision was one of the major attractors that brought us to Wheat Ridge. But beyond that, the people who will be here long after we're gone are the folks who have purchased their units at Perrin's Row. And you may realize that they literally step right out their front door and onto the sidewalk in keeping with the urban overlay zoning that was in place, that permitted the plating to happen the way that it did. We can talk about our investment, but these are real people that have made an investment in that same vision. And it would be a tough thing to open your doors to a traffic lane compared to what's there now. And so, I'm really here to speak more for them than for us, that we have 12 people who have invested their front door right onto the sidewalk, and then we have another 10, we have, we have a total of 26 units there, so we have another, do the math, another 16 units that bought into the vision of the neighborhood. And so, from, on behalf of them, I would just like to say, stay the course. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Carolyn Mallory? Followed by Rachel Hulting?
My name is Caroline Mallory. I am a native of Colorado and a fourth-generation Wheat Ridgeite. I'm asking that you consider moving the parallel parking on 38th that has just been renewed back next to the sidewalk, because right now, if you get out of your car and open the door, you're very likely to hit a bicycle rider if you're there, because they are so close, or at least come to some sort of area that gives the driver of a car, today I had to stop, everybody had to stop and wait for somebody to try to back into those spaces. They just aren't in the right place. I would like to see all of the planters and seeded areas removed. They're not very inviting, they've been hazardous, and I know they're expensive to maintain. Other communities have done some very lovely things with planters hanging on pole, light poles or whatever. I think we could do, accomplish something much more attractive than what we have, and we wouldn't have as many problems. And I really object to Wheat Ridge 38th Avenue being compared to old Arvada, Highlands, Littleton, and Tennyson. Arvada was very lucky. The state took care of their problem, they gave them Wadsworth bypass. And Highlands, nobody drives down there, go anywhere except to go to eat down there. You don't have to get anywhere beyond that Highlands area to get somewhere else, they go on Spear Boulevard down to, or 38th down to Spear. Littleton, you get off of Santa Fe to go into that area. Again, it's not on a major highway. Tennyson, Tennyson is just, you know, one of those little streets that they've done a great job, but it is not a thoroughfare for anyone. 38th Avenue is a through street, and it comes all the way from about Fox to Youngfield. And many people want to be able to go through there without having to slow down and go through the process that we have to go through now. I'd like to know, I've seen tickets be given to drivers, are there ever any tickets given to bicycle riders in that area? Because they certainly have a strange attitude. The current two-lane configuration has caused major problems at Marshall and Newland, and people don't know exactly where to go. If you're following the law, you pull in there, and the person coming at you wants to go left on the other side, you're both in exactly the same space. Then, that left center lane has also become a speed-through lane for people who don't want to wait for right turners. So, it really has a, I'm surprised that we haven't had more major accidents there. I personally have had several encounters that were very scary. And I'd like to comment about the area that is south of 38th, Teller and High Court. Those are forgotten neighborhoods, they have no sidewalks, they have no drainage plan, they have not been updated for years. And we're talking about all this other thing, all these other things to spend money on, we have forgotten those neighborhoods.
Thank you, Carolyn. Rachel Hulting, followed by Luke.
Good evening. My name is Rachel Hulting, and I live at 4690 Balsam Street in District 2. And I just want to start by just clarifying a couple of things. I've heard several references tonight that last fall, our community voted to turn 38th Avenue back into four lanes. And the only thing, the only fact we have from the outcome of the election on the 2B issue was that the voters did not approve a proposed change in the street width. Anything else that anyone claims is an outcome of that ballot is conjecture. But what we do know is that last fall kind of tore at our community fabric, it really pitted neighbor against neighbor, and it was just really heartbreaking to me, because we were talking about making a Main Street in our community, and that doesn't reflect my vision of our community. My vision of our community is how do we work together to make a Main Street? And we want a Main Street. I think there are definitely people in our community who don't share that vision, but most of the people that I've spoken to on either side of 2B want a Main Street in our community, they want a destination, they want to create a place for people, and they want a place where they can connect with one another. And that's the conversation I hear again and again. I went to a pelvic art symposium on Friday, and one of the questions that was posed was, "How would you feel about this if it went away? Would you miss it? What would that leave in your impression of the place?" And I think if we took away the idea of creating Main Street in our community, I think we would be devastated. We would lose something that is really important to who we are. And I just implore everybody in this room, whether you're sitting on the side chairs or at the table, to find a way to move forward, because if we don't, we're not the community, any one of us visions. I think the citizen survey is going to provide a lot of important information, again, so we're not going off of conjecture, but whether input that's been provided to us by our community. And I think if we look to the results of the citizen survey, we also have the opportunity to maybe do a couple of town halls, in which we can discuss a couple of different options, and not just focus on how many street lanes we have, but really focus on how are we creating a place that's safe for people on foot, on bikes, and in cars, that can connect with local businesses and connect with one another. So, again, I just, as everyone leaves tonight, ask yourselves, how would you feel if our Main Street went away? And is that the community that you envision yourself and future generations thriving in? Thank you.
Thank you. And this might be our final speaker, Luke Burrow.
Thank you, Mayor Jay, and council members, and everyone else who came to attend. My name is Luke Schultzbury, it's S-C-H-U-L-T-Z-burry-B-U-R-R-E-Y, it's a mouthful. I live at 5887 West 38th Avenue, own Fido's Grub and Tub with my wife, Cruz. We also own the building, technically, the bank owns it, but, and hopefully will own it at some point. We have brought another business in as well as ours. It's been a great area. We brought our business to Wheat Ridge and moved our family to Wheat Ridge and live here as well, because we've bought into your changes along 38th Avenue, we like what you've done. We used to live for 17 years in Gunnison, Colorado, which was a very small, tight-knit community. Moving back to the big city, we never really had that connection again to a community, and we really missed it. When we discovered what you were doing here in Wheat Ridge, it really drew us to it, so much so that we bought a building that we had no plans on doing, we just wanted to start a small business. But it was such a great opportunity and such a vision, and it's so great that we just decided we really want to be a part of this, so we scratched together every penny and made it happen. And it's been wonderful from the beginning. Neighborhood support, not just in Wheat Ridge, but neighboring areas as well, Denver, Lakewood, Arvada, Golden. It's been great, they're coming and spending money in Wheat Ridge. We love the Main Street idea. We didn't want to be in Main Street, we wanted to be adjacent to Main Street, because we're not really a Main Street style of business. So, it was perfect for us. We love what you've done with that stretch between Wadsworth to Sheridan, or, excuse me, Sheridan to Harlan. Really like to see that continue, from Harlan all the way down to the Main Street. I really feel keeping the three lanes is very important to the community feel you're trying to achieve, that you have achieved, and hopefully you'll continue to maintain. I would like to see the on-street parking go away, because I know everybody hates that, and I'd like to see thorough, thorough bike lanes instead. I think that's incredibly important, along with those sidewalks, to have that easy bike ability, to go from the edge neighborhoods where you want to draw people down to your Main Street. So, I just want to say thank you, and please stay the course, and please continue with this 38th Avenue.
Thank you. That's the list that I have signed up. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak that didn't get a chance to sign up? Nope.
Are we going for an urban area or a Main Street? That's what I want to know.
I don't think we're making a decision about that. Did you wish to speak on something?
I just wanted to know if this Main Street plan was for urbanizing, or just being a Main Street?
Actually, I think as you, as you listen, as the meeting goes on, perhaps that will reveal itself. I don't believe that there is a question in that direction. Patrick, do you want to respond to that?
No, I was getting ready for a presentation.
Okay.
That might help, maybe.
That might help, the presentation. Okay. Actually, this would be staff reports, and that is, Patrick is definitely staff.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Thank you, everybody who came out and spoke this evening. It's, I think, difficult to follow up on this, a lot of passionate discussion, and we understand that. So, that being said, I, this presentation's going to be very short, we want to keep this evening open for a great dialogue with City Council. I think we obviously know, I think one thing everybody can agree on in this room is that they want some closure to this, this project, so either way it goes. So, we want that too, we want some good direction from City Council tonight to hopefully bring back some options in the future. So, a lot of what I'm going to say was repeated, I'm going to be repeating from a lot of comments that you citizens made, so it won't take too long, I'll go through it fairly quickly. So, my presentation tonight is, we're just going to go over the background. I think it's important to make sure, anytime that you're re-engaging on a discussion, on an idea, that you really make sure you understand where you came from. We're going to talk about accomplishments, a lot of those have been talked about tonight in the metrics. We've been measuring some metrics on this temporary project for two years now, and we've been given periodic updates on those, and we'll, we'll continue giving updates tonight on that. Then some possible next steps, and then open it up for discussion. So, the background, as many of you noted tonight, 2005 was the NRS, the Neighborhood Revitalization Strategy, City Council adopted that in 2005. It referred to 38th Avenue. It encouraged the city to pursue policies that encourage redevelopment and to promote 38th Avenue as a destination Main Street and pedestrian-oriented place. In 2009, City Council adopted the city's comprehensive plan, Envision Wheat Ridge, and that plan specifically describes the future of the 38th Avenue corridor from Wadsworth to Pierce as a transit and pedestrian-friendly Main Street. Then, we were lucky to have DCI, which is Downtown Colorado, Inc., and DOLA, Department of Local Affairs, they brought a technical panel of experts out to our city, and about 80 residents, business owners, participated in that, and they looked at 38th Avenue and, and worked with, with staff and the residents to determine what 38th Avenue could be for the community, and how it really could be successful. The idea of the temporary restriping really came from that, that process. The 80 folks or so who participated said they really wanted something to happen quickly. That suggestion came up by one of the experts on the panel, said this is something that you could do on a temporary basis, see how it works. So, that's really where that idea of the temporary striping to narrow the road came from. And then, 2011, City Council adopted the 38th Avenue Corridor Plan. And that plan refines the Main Street vision and outlines specific action steps for revitalization. The plan was developed with a 20-member stakeholder committee and extensive public outreach process. Then, most recently, the 38th Avenue streetscape design was approved in 2014, and that's, that's the design that really, that was put in place, that included the narrowing of the lanes and, and the streetscape, and the sidewalks, and bike lanes, and parking and such. And that's really what we're talking about, want to talk about tonight. How do we move forward with that, or not move forward with that, or move forward in a different direction? Some of the accomplishments over the last few years, we've, we've really been starting to focus our major events in the city along 38th Avenue. We've had nine major events since 2012, one's coming up here on June 7th, I believe, the Wheat Ridge Criterion, so we're excited about that. And then, just in 2014, four of our larger events, we had over 9,000 people attend those events, so it's really exciting to see people congregate to the, to the corridor. A formation of a leadership committee of property owners, business owners, and others was formed, and they're actually looking at a business improvement district to facilitate marketing and different events on 38th Avenue. It was mentioned before that the marketing plan for 38th Avenue was awarded the governor's award from, at the DCI conference. New residential and commercial development has been seen along 38th Avenue after it was rezoned to mixed-use neighborhood. And then, there's investment in new and existing businesses along the corridor. A lot of that was mentioned this evening. The metrics, as we mentioned, these were a few of those. Sales tax, in 2014, we saw about a 36% increase in sales tax since 2011, over 2011. That's compared to 13% that was seen citywide. Over 2012, it was a 20% increase compared to 12% citywide. In 2013, it's a 16% compared to 7% citywide. Speeds were mentioned earlier. Average speeds have definitely dipped. They're closer to the actual speed limit of the street, which is 35 miles per hour. Volumes on the street have actually, there was a dip in volumes of traffic on the street when we first did the temporary restriping, but those volumes are back to the pre-striping levels, to about 17,000 to 18,000 cars a day. And there's really no trends in accident or bike and pet activity at this point that we can report on. At least one council member recently, at least on paper, there's been a lot of discussions with many council members on what to do. But we did receive one written document from a council member who suggested some ideas. Staff received direction to look at that and come back with some potential options. We broke those down in a few phases. These are just potential steps. Obviously, council needs to discuss these in more detail. These are just ideas from one council member. But Phase 1, what we could do is remove the backend parking, and that has been completed. Activate that gap that's been created from moving the backend parking to parallel parking. There's a gap between the parking and the curb. And this picture here on the screen is just an example of how you can activate that gap. You can stick in more boardwalks and seating or flowers. A lot of cities do these on a temporary basis just during the summer, or in nicer climates can do it all year long. And then, continue with the bicycle improvements, bicycle wayfinding to get bicyclists on our new bike routes on Pierce and such to the 38th Avenue corridor. Some Phase 2 improvements, next steps could be redesigning key intersections to continue what the city did years ago on, between Sheridan and Harlan, and what potentially is going to be done on Wadsworth. When Wadsworth has some improvements, we could replicate that on the intersections from Wadsworth to Harlan. Consolidate curb cuts. I think as you all know, if you're involved in this process, there's a lot of curb cuts along the corridor that make it difficult for there to be a continuous safe sidewalk along the corridor. So consolidating those curb cuts makes it much easier to construct a continuous sidewalk. And install gateway features and public art along the whole corridor could be part of a Phase 2 approach. So, with that history and update on metrics, staff puts together some discussion points that we hope could lead discussion tonight with city council. These are in your packet. These are consolidated a little bit up here on the screen. You know, I think we should start at a bigger level, higher level discussion, and really be honest and talk about if there's still support for 38th Avenue as it's described in the NRS envisioned Wheat Ridge and 38th Avenue corridor. Is there support for the 38th Avenue corridor streetscape design? And if there is, how do we implement that? We know there's a cost. We did take it to the voters. Voters said, "Don't widen, or don't narrow the street. Don't change the flow." There is a cost. We'd have to find the money to do something. If you don't support the current streetscape design, do you support going back to a different lane-ish, four and five lanes? If you don't support the streetscape design, do you support more limited streetscape design within the existing right-of-way or the purchase of other right-of-way from private property And then, as was, I just discussed in the previous slide, should the city pursue any of the Phase 1 or Phase 2 improvements at any point? Should that be considered? Should the city wait for the results of the citizen survey before proceeding? Citizen survey is out now. If you received one, you should have it now. We expect we should have initial results sometime in August, I believe. So, we should have some good information by then. And then, other options. I think everything's on the table and open, and we want to have an honest and open discussion and try to come to some consensus and move forward. So, with that, we have staff here to help answer any questions that you may have, but otherwise, you can use these questions as a guide in your discussion tonight.
Okay. We've had a lot of presenting. Are there some questions or just some discussion that you'd like to get into before we get down to these questions, which we need to answer?
Where was it? Lauren, did over that was? I'm sorry, we don't know the exact city. An example of a city that has something like that is Louisville. They have those types of movable boardwalks that they move in. We don't know exactly where this one was.
Are you familiar with Los Angeles, California, or New York City?
I'm sorry. Could you hold those questions? This is really a study session at this point. So I'll be looking to the council for discussion at this point. Mr. Fitzgerald.
I'll start, since everybody seems shy. So the first question is, do you support the plan as previously envisioned? And I would have to say that the plan that was previously envisioned maybe is just too grand, that we need to back off a little bit and do a step at a time. And so, I would like to start at Urban and move maybe to Pierce.
You mean Uppam?
Uppam, right. Excuse me. Yeah, Uppam. So, I just opened it with that.
Okay. Someone else wanting to? So what you're saying is that as far as the plan portion of it, this would be similar to what we saw in the original plan, but limited between Uppam and Pierce Street?
Well, I think that's open to discussion.
Okay.
Because we know for sure we can't move the curbs.
We can't move the curbs, right?
So, we have to do something different. We know that. But I think the entire length is just too grand a concept to take out once. We need to divide it into bites. So that's what I'm suggesting.
May I ask, grand in the, financially grand, or whether it's the elaborateness of it?
The elaborateness of it, and just that since the original plan sort of envisioned three different community profiles, it just gets too complicated. I think we lost the battle of explaining what this was all about. And so, we have to divide it into a bite that we can explain better.
Okay. All right. Other comments or questions? I think I have Ms. Davis.
So, I hear and understand both sides of the situation. And, you know, to answer number one, do you support the 38th Avenue, NRS envisioned Wheat Ridge, you know, in the corridor plan? I do support that. I support the, you know, the development and the businesses on the street as it is today. I do have some comments because I can understand, and I'm excited to see the new folks moving in because they're moving in because of the vision and that type of thing. And I can see the folks that have been here for a while also feeling that the change in the street lanes have had an impact in their environment. You know, one of the things I look at is, and I think four or five years ago, you know, 38th was not a thriving, I mean, it was a street, and I think Mr. Nealon had even said something, it was a street that was struggling. And so, I don't want to go back to struggle and have that street become a struggle, but I understand where people are coming from. You know, part of my worry is, again, as Ms. Hulteen had said, the ballot question really was, do we permanently change curb and gutter? And the way a lot of folks heard the ballot question was, do we go back to four and five lanes? But I do feel that as it is now, I'd like to do, if we do anything, do a portion of it right versus, I think, right now, how it stands. You know, I think all of us would agree on some of the, you know, the parallel parking on the street isn't necessary and some of those things. So, there's mixed feelings about it. I do think we need to move forward and do something. Again, I worry about the money. I also heard someone present and say, on the ballot said, "Did you want to spend 9.8 million?" No, that was not a ballot question, and that was nowhere in the ballot. And I think that when we, when opposition pulled that in, a lot of people did, they voted no against 2B because of the money, not necessarily because of the street. So, we did muddy it. I do think that a lot of the survey will make a difference to hear what the folks say, but I will say we did hear the vote as well. So, I do want to make some changes or entertain some different ideas that would bring our community back together. I don't want to go backwards, but I do want to develop some type of happy medium so that folks are happy with the street.
Thank you. Mr. Urban, were you wanting to speak next?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Going to the first question, do you support the vision of 38th Avenue as described in the NRS envisioned Wheat Ridge and 38th Avenue corridor plans? I'll speak directly to the corridor plan because that is, that's where most of the meat is with respect to the recommendations that we're considering. When you look at the 38th Avenue corridor plan, it has four specific guiding principles that are used to sort of outline what that corridor plan is. And those are mobility, appeal, vitality, and identity. And each of those guiding principles has sort of sub-principles in them, totaling about 40 different principles that are being considered with respect to the corridor plan as to what do we want to see. And if you ask residents of Wheat Ridge, or if you ask city staff, we'll all agree that we want to have 38th be a place where we can live, work, and thrive, that we can have good, solid businesses thriving and places to meet and gather. And I think everybody gets that that's what you're going for. Only three of the 40 points that were listed in the corridor plan directly mention and recommend anything related to what's commonly considered as a road diet, although that seems to be a term that is being less used because it's less popular, but we'll just call it what it is. It's a road diet. And the road diet aspects of these plans constrict what is considered a regional thoroughfare. The regional nature of this is contained in the money that we've received from the federal high administration to widen 38th back in the day. And we continue to, you can, it's just, it's not up for debate whether or not 38th connects Wheat Ridge to other municipalities. That's what it does. And because of that, and the amount of opportunity that we have in bringing more people into the city through 38th Avenue, it's important to keep that as open to the flow of traffic as possible while still considering some of these aspects with respect to having nice curbs and gutters, having nice sidewalks, having an ability for someone in a wheelchair to be able to navigate the sidewalks. I totally get and appreciate that. But as it pertains to the road diet, that was a recommendation made in the plan to be done on a temporary basis. And temporary is used a number of times in the plan. So if we agree with the plan, we agree that this should be temporary. And as it relates to the election last fall, if it was only related to the specific road width, then the word vision wouldn't have been contained in the ballot question, but it was. It was asking residents, "Do you agree with the vision that's being proposed?" And as it relates to implementing a permanent road diet, the residents said no. And so, if the plan suggests a temporary placement of a road diet, and the residents say they don't want that road diet anymore, it would make sense that we move away from that strategy and focus more on the land use and urban design elements of the recommendation and the economic development elements of the recommendations that are contained in the plan. And step away from the road diet as it is too costly for this stretch of road, and also not focus directly on increasing the retail sales capacity of the corridor. My concern isn't how much sales tax has gone up, it's what have we missed out on by focusing too much on streetscape design and not focus enough on increasing the retail square footage available in the corridor and encouraging businesses to thrive. So, that's my piece on it. Thank you.
I'm afraid that's too complicated for me to summarize. Thank you, though. Ms. Wood?
I have a question, and it's based on what was commented on earlier, and also the emails and phone calls and comments that we've heard tonight also. And that is to specifically talk about what was voted on in 2B, and maybe the city attorney can help us on that also, that we, what was voted on in 2B was not changing the number of lanes. It was the permanent curb-to-curb street width. And so, when people are saying to us, we, and I'm talking about residents that have emailed me and said, "We voted on four lanes." And I go back and I say, "That's not exactly what we voted on." And I've continued to hear that comment. So if we could have some information from staff or the attorney as to kind of clarify for everybody what 2B really was.
Mr. Dole, you want me to take that, or you got it?
Well, I can tell you, please.
Use your mic, please.
The question on street width was exclusively that. And we had the electoral result on that, that there was not to be a change in the width. How the council chooses to divide up that width amongst bike lanes and travel lanes is up to the council and didn't get decided. I realize there was a lot of discussion of that in the kind of electoral, you know, in the debate. But in terms of the net result, we know the street width doesn't change, but how the council divvies it up and uses it for traffic lanes and bike lanes and other things remains up to the council and wasn't decided in the ballot measure.
Did that help you, Ms. Wood? Okay, we're still at this question, which the first one is, do you support the 2005 Neighborhood Revitalization Strategy as it relates to 38th Avenue? Which the Neighborhood Revitalization Strategy was the first and original plan. And what that refers to...
You can keep going, but I'll go.
Oh, okay. I was going to show you exactly what that referred to, but go ahead, George.
All right. Well, I will start with number one. I do support the vision for 38th Avenue as it was described in the NRS and our comp plan and the subsequent corridor plan. And I'm sorry, I'm going to bore you with a little bit of a story because I do, I really appreciate everyone's comments tonight on both sides of the issue, but it's really nice to see the many people who were stated, stating that they either, they came here, they brought their business here in many ways because of these visioning documents. And I'm one of those as well. As a matter of fact, many years ago, I was contemplating moving to Wheat Ridge, as a matter of fact, and I picked up the phone, I have no idea why, and I called a handsome young mayor at the time there, who, and I said, "Why would I move to Wheat Ridge, Colorado?" And I wanted to know more about this community. I wanted to know more specifically about the plans. And these are, in fact, are what I was directed to, that this city had, did have a vision. And that, you know, and if you really read the NRS, that it's not just a vision founded on nothing, that there was contemplation and studying, studying what the condition was of the city at the time, what the problems were, and how to move forward and how to solve that, and that they had a vision. And I, for me, that was the selling point of why to come here, to participate in the vision. You know, so that's the easiest part of this whole thing because beyond that, we're getting into details, and the details are very important, and the details are also difficult. And I realize that we have yet to come to consensus on that, and we need to do that. I do hope, though, and as we heard tonight, that we agree on the vision. I do. I support the vision as it was designed. I support the vision as it was described in the NRS and as it evolved into the, into our comprehensive plan, as it evolved into a series of other plans. And I share the feeling that many people articulated tonight, that in fact, that was very compelling. That was compelling to look at from the outside in and say, "I want to be a part of that. I'm glad that they're thinking about that. Not only am I glad that they're thinking about it, but I want to join that, and I want to be a part of that." And I have, although I didn't expect to be here. But so that's my, that's my answer. I'll, I mean, I'm going to withhold unless you want me to, my further comments on point number two, unless you want me to just say that. Question number two.
Why don't we go ahead and finish up with question number one, and then we can come back to that. And then still, do you support the NRS?
Number three, actually. Number one.
Number one.
This is one through three on here. Kind of is one through three.
One through three, so which would include number two?
And three.
And three, okay.
So I do, I do support the streetscape plan. And in saying that, I realize that, again, this is in the details and that, and that we're obviously, for many reasons, including the vote on 2B, that does not allow us to actually permanently change the road width, that we can't, we can't move forward with the streetscape plan regardless of whether I support it or not. And so I realize that, and I'm willing to move forward, and I'm sure there'll be more discussion tonight. I also, I agree that getting the survey that has some more pointed questions on that would be important, and I hope we do that. I agree with the comment, at least one of the comments tonight regarding moving forward with some public meetings. And I, and I think that, to the point, including whether or not there should be a road diet or not should be a road diet, what I'm hearing and what I believe in the plan is that space and pedestrian space and safety and that place to thrive and to have a destination requires space. And so somehow, we do have to study the options for a pedestrian, bicycle, vehicular balance on the street, and that requires a study of space. And I hope that we move forward. I'll just put it out there, clearly, we're at a point where we're going to have to spend more money on design consultation. I don't see how we're going to do this without professional help, nor do I believe we should do it without professional help to support kind of getting in, you know, to the details and finding the right, the right balance, conducting these public meetings, and really doing an analysis of that, of the right-of-way and the conditions on the road for us to find more of that space that we need.
Okay. I think one of the important things that you did mention was the fact that the streetscape, the actual streetscape design, we really cannot utilize that anyway because of the Oh, okay. Mr. DiTullio, you'd wanted to speak?
Well, is Mr. Pond, are you done?
Yeah.
See, here's what's frustrating me about this. The 2014 election really ripped the city apart for really no reason because the argument was, we had one option. And I've been asking, and I think the citizens have asked me, is in 2000, when we did Sheridan to Harlan, we came up with a streetscape manual, we had town meetings, we had pros and cons of that Harlan, Sheridan, with the grass and the trees and the lights and the clocks and all that streetscape. We had a lot of town meetings, we had people look at different options in that area. And all of that streetscape that's done, Sheridan to Harlan, can be done Harlan West, whether we have four lanes, three lanes, or five lanes. That, oh, that's, it's behind the curb, and that was all designed to work with property owners on both sides of the curb. Like, for example, since 2B failed, you could go to a company like Company's Construction and say, "Okay, you've got some extra right-of-way here, or can we have an easement for an amenity zone on your property? Or can we landscape your property for you, and we'll take care of it for a few years?" So all of those streetscape features, they're called "street treatments." I know it sounds weird, but that's what they were called back in 2000, is that you can do all that under the current configuration of the street, whether it's three lanes, four lanes, or five lanes. Now, people get confused on these lanes because from Sheridan to Harlan, it was four lanes, two east and two west, and then from Pierce West, it was five lanes, it was two east, two west, and the center, turn lane. So I'm not really here tonight to fight about lanes or fight about 2014 ballot question or how much it's going to cost. I know it's going to cost less to do what we're going to do now because we're not digging up the street and moving pipe and water pipes and sewer lines, all that stuff, where they block. What all I'm asking for tonight is that we get a consensus that we go forward with some different options, that the voters and at a town meeting can sit down and look and say, "Okay, I like that, I like that, I like this, I like that." And it's going to take time for staff to go talk to some property owners and say, "Can we have an easement, or can we buy some small right-of-way for the sidewalks?" And, you know, when I was talking to Mr. Starker at lunch, we had talked about this, and he, the suggestion he made really only covered, I guess, from Pierce to Upper. And I think if we're going to do this and at least keep it consistent, we should be from Harlan West, and I don't think it's going to cost that much more money to improve the sidewalks and do, do, improve lighting and pedestrian access from Harlan West rather than Upper West. I'd like to see us do, at least have a plan for the entire street so that we're not piecemealing it. But like I said, the streetscape that we have on file can be used with any different combination of lanes, but we just got to work with the property owners, block by block, and talk to them and say, "Business owners, what can we do here? What can't we do here? What are you willing to work with us on?" And I think, you know, back in 2000, we had one property owner get upset with the city of Wheat Ridge, it was the cabinet shop at 38th and Harlan, and he had all kinds of nasty flyers and signs up about Vance Edwards and myself, the king and queen of Wheat Ridge, and it was the whole big mess over there. And, but that was the only business that fought that in the end because we had everybody in the loop. So all, I don't, tonight, I don't think we should try to get into all of the details, but all I'm asking for is that sometime, we have some town meetings, we're going to be able to have at least two options on the board that says, "Here's a four-lane option, here's a four-three-four lane option." Mr. Starker has proposed a four-lanes, then three-lanes in the business area, and then four-lanes again. I would support four-lanes all the way from Sheridan to Wadsworth with ten-foot-wide lanes, like we had talked about earlier, with bike lanes all the way from Sheridan to Wadsworth. The idea of the, and what we've heard of is that people are concerned about the speeding on the street, and that's a problem. So there's a lot of street treatments like raised crosswalks and narrowing of the lanes and having the bike lanes on the sides, and you can still have your four-lanes. And like all the planners, all that stuff we did on Harlan and Pierce, or at least at Harlan, you could do that on Pierce, you know, Tom Schmucke's talked about wanting to redo that planner in front of his building. So there's a lot of options, but we got to get, kind of like start throwing everything in the pot here and see what we can get for some options and have some, enjoy it and have some fun with it, and work with the business owners and work with the community and say, "Here's things we can do." I don't, I don't think that if we go to the, to the community with one other option and say, "This is all we're going to do," it's going to be another fight. So we got to at least present some options to the community. I'm okay with a four-three-four and a four-lane with bike lanes all the way through on the four-lane, narrower lanes to decrease the speed, the crosswalks, the flashing lights, the crosswalk types of implementations. I mean, number one and number two, well, yeah, I mean, I supported those. I was part of the councils that approved them and voted on them. I mean, we had council people walking 38th Avenue from Sheridan to Harlan for a year doing the streetscape. So I think we just got to move on and look at some different options for the community and quit arguing about the past and who's on first and just start presenting a couple of different options to the community. So I would hope that out of all the discussion tonight, that staff can be able to bring back some designs through our CAD CAM and not spending, maybe consulting yet, but to say, "What can we do here?" And have some of the town meetings and work with some issues. So that's where I'm at, is...
Thank you. When I was saying that about the streetscape, what I was referring to was the cement, the curb-moving portion, that we can't do that portion. That's what I was referring to.
Yeah, I appreciate everything you said because in some ways it was, you know, reiterating what I said, which is, I think we need to study the options here. I don't agree with staff presenting those options to us. I prefer that we look at, you know, to me, this is, this is, this is a significant design issue. I'd prefer that it get, that it get looked that way. That's why we brought these consultants in in the first place. I would like to either extend that and/or put it out for RFP so that we have, we have the real documentation and the basis in order to have those conversations. So to have those public meetings and to show those options, how many they, how many ever they are. So I agree a hundred percent, I, but I don't think, I'd prefer, I would prefer to get some understanding of that.
So what you're, so what you're saying is, and I pretend to agree with, so we, for example, we paid Intellect Key forty grand for this one option. So if we have to engage another consultant like that, it may be more money to have at least two options, and they're going to show different options along the way with right-of-way acquisition and, or easements or whatever.
Yeah, and I, and I agree that, that right-of-way analysis is part of that. I'm, you know, I mean, I might, and I let Patrick talk to this, but I mean, maybe that's staff and going out and looking at right-of-way acquisition as a concept and bringing that back and to seeing how it, how it works. But I, you know, I think a continuation of the, of the design options, the streetscape as it exists, you know, obviously, in the approved design minus the curb issue, I think is still one of those options or a variant of that option, and there's probably two or three that you've mentioned, and I don't disagree that those should be on the table.
Mr. Starker?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, when I think about where we've, where we've sort of been, pardon me, with the, with the NRS and the, and the comprehensive plan, and I think we've done a lot of work in our, in our community, and I happen to think that it was a pretty open and available process, whether it had a lot of options to it or not, but I think there was a lot of opportunity for people to express their, their preferences and their opinions. To me, it's more about, about developing a place. You know, the vision that we ought to have is a place that we call Wheat Ridge that really, that feels comfortable. It feels, it feels like you want it, you want to be there, you want to get out of your car, you want to, you want to get off your bicycle and see what's happening and interact with other people in a, in a, in a community setting that's, that's attractive, that's friendly, that has amenities, that, that makes you, makes you proud and makes you want to be there. You know, part, part of the struggles that I have with talking about 38th Avenue is talking about 38th Avenue as a transportation corridor. And you look at it just, and you look at it literally, in a linear fashion, and, and it really shouldn't be a linear-fashioned decision, shouldn't be that, that concept. We should be able to drive through there, but you should be able to know when you're coming into there that it's not, it's not a high-speed thoroughfare that gets us from Denver to Golden. I think if you take, if you take and take whatever section that you call Wheat Ridge, that you call our main street, we should, we should be able to, to constrict the, the speed at which traffic flows through there. You should be able to feel as a pedestrian walking down the, down a sidewalk, that you're not just vroom, vroom, vroom in the, in the midst of a large transportation corridor, handling vehicle or traffic. We have, we did some good, some good streetscape work on the east end of town from Sheridan to Harlan. You know, when I looked and said, "Why don't, is it, is it possible for us to take some of the intersections and take some of the design work that we employed there?" We're, you know, 2B, 2B tells us that we're going to leave the flow lines where they are. But beyond that, we have other opportunities. We can bring, we can bring amenity zones into the, into the street, into the flow-line area. We can acquire right-of-way and acquire sidewalks and, and, and public infrastructure and amenity zones on the, on the back of the, on the back of the current right-of-way. All of those things are viable. We should, we should look at, at viable options to use, as Mr. DiTullio said, narrowing, narrowing street widths as a, as a possible alternative. Continuing the bike lanes is a possible alternative. You know, I think, I think we have the opportunity to look at a number of different options and lane widths and lane configurations and, and, you know, you know, and we, we didn't do that from Harlan to Sheridan, as I recall. There was no discussion about, about narrowing the street. So, you know, we didn't have that discussion, and we're having it now. But I think, you know, and I, and I look at some of the, you know, some of the right-of-way and some of the, some of the attractive intersections and other things that we can do along the street as opportunities to make a really viable gathering place-type area. So, you know, for, for number one, yeah, I, I support the, you know, the NRS and the corridor plan. I support the, the streetscape design, and by streetscape design, if that's sort of the, the type of bollards and light fixtures and, and the actual features that went in there, those were fine. You know, there's a lot of different, different things like that that we could put together. But I think, I think we should be able to come to a consensus to agree, to sit down and do some more design discussion. I agree with Mr. Pond that, that in this case, we probably should look for some professional help to work with our staff so that we're not throwing this burden on them because it's gotten to be a pretty, pretty controversial issue here in our little town, you know? And I think, I think we all need to sort of step back and say, "Listen, we need to, we need to do this together." That's one of the things that we didn't, we haven't been doing, is doing this together. And people are saying that they didn't get a voice in the discussion, and I want everybody to have a voice in the discussion. And as somebody else said, pardon me, you know, we're going to, at some point, come down and make decisions, and not everybody's going to like every decision. So that's, that's sort of a factor also. But I, I think we could, certainly by, by studying this issue, and I think we could, we can study different, different lane configurations and come up with a good plan.
Ms. Wooden?
For number one, I do support the NRS, I do support the Envision Wheat Ridge and the 38th Avenue Corridor Plan. As far as some of the other things that have been discussed tonight, I, I, there was a lot of public discussion, and I know the city did a lot of meetings, and none of them were private, they, they were open to the public. So there's been a lot of discussion, and what Bud just mentioned is, we can continue to have the discussion, and in the end, a decision is going to need to be made, and everyone will not be happy about it. And that's just a fact. And so it's concerning that we're continuing to discuss this even though there were extensive meetings. I went to several of them, I saw different plans, and I saw different ideas, and I saw people suggesting ideas, and that now that we're this far down and for people to come up and say, "There was no public discussion," isn't, isn't exactly true. There was public discussion, there was many, many meetings, and there was Intellect Key public meetings where they had pictures of everything, and you could see what they were suggesting. And so I do think we need to move forward. We absolutely need to move forward on this plan. We can continue the public discussion, but we need to make some decisions, and we need to move forward with the understanding that whatever we choose, not everybody is going to be happy with. As far as some of the other things that were mentioned, I think what people have told me they're looking for, what I've heard, and what polls have told us, is that people are looking for a Main Street idea destination where they can go, where we can say, "I'll meet you on 38th Avenue at so-and-so place." To create something like that, to create a place, we're going to have to slow down the traffic, and I think a lot of people agree on that. That's going to mean creating wider sidewalks, possible bike lanes, and slowing down traffic. And the slowing down the traffic is one of the main things. Before the lanes were, or before the road diet, the average speed was 47 miles an hour, and that is too fast to bring children and families down to walk along the sidewalk and to possibly sit and eat something along the, along the street. So I think getting the, the traffic speed down is very important, creating walkability, creating safe sidewalks, and creating a place, a place where people can visit and they can call a Main Street is very important to all the things we're going to discuss here. But absolutely, I feel that we have to move forward, decisions have to be made. We can't discuss this for the next five years.
I have Mr. Fitzgerald. Are you saying that you would like to go ahead with a decision versus getting another design firm? Are you ready to say that?
Well, I, I think the council as a whole is going to have to decide that, and suggesting more design, as was brought up earlier, we can go ahead with that. And also waiting for the results, when do the results for the survey come out?
We should have some initial results in August, I believe.
Okay.
I'm sorry, sir. We've had public comment. Thank you, though. I said, Mr., you were, were you done?
Yeah.
And Mr. Fitzgerald, I had next.
I think everybody's had some valuable ideas here. I just want to bring up that we all talk about one of our goals being creating a city center, and to me, that means we have to have a focal point. And I don't think, I think we should keep that in... And to me, that means we have to have a focal point, and I don't think, I think we should keep that in mind as we go forward. Because the focal point can't be all the way from Urban or Wadsworth, excuse me, Uppam, yeah.
For the record, I'm okay with it being named Urban.
Yeah, that's right, we'll change the name maybe, but then we'll have two of them. From Uppam to Sheridan is just too big to be a focal point. So I just want to bring that up. I have no objection to considering, uh, what to do with the lanes east of, uh, of, of Pierce. But I do think, again, I re, to reiterate, we need to concentrate on the western part.
The only part that I would disagree with, I think we could go Harlan to Pierce, but it wouldn't have to be as, as intense as Pierce West, if you're talking about a city center part. But what I would support, and like we, like was mentioned earlier, is if we have to bring on a consultant, I, I thought that would be too early in the process. But if we have to bring on somebody that could go out, would, and work with us to come up with different options, that's what I'm, that's what I'm looking for, is that the community has some options to look at soon. And I, I, I think, again, one of the reasons why it, the, the, whether you went to the meetings or not, people, there's, there's a perception in the community that they weren't heard at some of those meetings. And so what we need to do is not, not start over again, but actually have a couple of options brought forth from a consultant and have, everything should be on the table for what we could do on there. Whether it's the amenity zones, the lights, the bollards, the landscaping, the streetscape. I would like to see, you know, what the options are with, with acquiring some right-of-way or having easements with some of the property owners, and see what we could do on the sides of the curbs for all of this to work. And you're gonna have to have some different lane configurations, and like was mentioned, you know, the ten-foot lane with bike lanes all the way from Sheridan to Wadsworth with the four lanes, that slows down traffic, it narrows the streets, like we've done on Pierce. That's narrowed, that's, that slowed down traffic somewhat on Pierce because of the bike lanes. So I just think we need to have options, that's what I'm looking for in June, July, or August, whenever this is gonna come forth. So Patrick, my question for you is, do we have to go with the same consultant, or we can, can we go with a different consultant and, and give them some choices, or what, what do you suggest?
No, I mean-
Or can staff do it in-house?
No, we, yeah, we, we could do, we could do anything you want. And, you know, I think staff could do some initial work, but I agree that, um, to get final design options, we'd probably need some professional help. And if we wanna use Intellicy, I think that would maybe save us some money, 'cause they have a lot of the work in place, but doesn't mean we have to use them, we could start fresh and start with somebody new.
I had Mr. Pond here.
Yeah, and I just wanna, I wanna clarify a couple of points from, from the last two comments. Yeah, I, I wanna reiterate, I don't think this is starting over at all, quite the opposite. I think this is the appropriate continuation of the work that's, that's in place. And I, I, that's the way I look at it, and I, I, I hope everyone else would, would as well, and I agree that we have an obligation to, to move forward. But the reality is, we do not have a design. Because the, because the component, you know, the design as, as stated, has a, has a roadway designation that was not approved. So we don't have a viable design, and that's, that's just where we're at. And so, um, it does present the need, obviously, to advance the design now with, with that, with that. I agree, then, that it creates an opportunity to advance multiple options. What I'm hearing, and what I, at least personally, believe, is that the foundation of the design, which is creating a destination and, and making it, um, making it work for these, these multiple modalities, you know, but really a focus on a place, is, is still the foundation of that design. So this is not going, this is not going, um, this is not going backwards. And that's the reason, I think, to kinda talk about picking up the design again, is not to, to, to go back or retrace or, or anything else, but actually to move forward, because we, we don't have a design right now.
I had three of you down there, Mr. Starker, I'll start with you.
Well, I was gonna try to get a consensus together if I could, because I would, um, I would hope that we could reach consensus on, A, making the, making a place for downtown area, for a city center-type area, that integrates Thirty-Eighth Avenue and, and Wadsworth. I think it should be, we should focus on pedestrian and, pedestrian and, and the walking public and being outside of your car as a primary consideration. I think we should look at different lane and different bicycle and different sidewalk options and configurations. I think we ought to, um, be able to look at right-of-way acquisition, uh, in terms of being able to put those features in place. Easements if we need to, or right-of-way acquisitions, whatever the, whatever the appropriate, um, interface with, uh, with private, private parties along the, along the street. You know, I think we should look at innovative design if we can in the, in the building of the public facilities, so that we come up with really, really quality, a quality product that we step back and, and say, boy, that was, that was really nicely done. I think we need to consolidate curb cuts to enhance the walkability and the sidewalk interface that we have, so I think that should be part of it. I think we should rely on our staff to do what they can in the early, early design work and alert us to when, uh, when they think they need to bring in some outside professional help, so that we, so that we have a marriage of both of those qualities.
Is that-
And, and bring back, uh, you know, look at, look at multiple options in terms of the, uh, the number of lanes, uh, the extent of bicycle, uh, how, how robust we can make our sidewalks, um, how, how, what, what we can do in terms of traffic calming in order to calm the street. Maybe there's some other, some other things that we could look at. I think we look, ought to look at, uh, at way, wayfinding signage in the bicycle program. I think we ought to look at identity, identity signage for the, for the city center area itself, so that we, um, so that we're able to, to generate enthusiasm and, and, and develop a sense of place.
Are you making some kind of, you had announced you were gonna make a consensus.
That was the consensus, would you like to, would you like to read, read that back to me?
George, you got it, George is writing, I think I have most of it.
We have a three thousand-word consensus here.
Let Patrick repeat it to you.
Do I have some comment on the consensus?
I remember looking at pictures, and I'm sure you guys do too, of some of these things you just talked about. They showed us pictures of lights, they showed us pictures, they showed us design pictures. It seems like a lot of this work has already been done, and are you suggesting we go back and redo it? Or are we gonna relook at what was already shown to us with some tweaks? Or because if we're gonna go back to Intellicy or whoever, that's more money we're spending. And I recall us already looking at, I, I remember seeing option A, option B, option C, and we've already done a lot of this. So what's the difference from what we're gonna do now?
Well, my intent would be to try to recover the design elements from the Intellicy, uh, that we, that we found generally acceptable, and, and reincorporate those into a plan that is not a full design, as Mr. Pond says, because we have, you know, there's, there's a, there's a design and then there's design. So we don't have a fully formed design, Mr. Pond is right, because we don't have this, you know, we're working with a different street width. But certainly some of the features and attributes that we, that we used into the design, the, the light poles and the bus shelters and some of that, I would think we could reincorporate that into the new program.
I'm sorry, I had, it's you, Fitzgerald.
I, I agree with Jen that we did do a lot of this work, and I, I would not like to do it all over again. But I would like to say, I wasn't, I, I didn't think the Intellicy plan was all that satisfying, and I would like to go with someone else with a fresh, who has a fresh view. And, uh, they can certainly pull from the Intellicy plan, but I think we need somebody with a fresh, fresh look at this. It's a, it's a different, uh, it's a different problem.
Okay, Mr. DiToyo's been wanting to speak, did you wanna speak, Christie? Only because he's spoken a couple of times.
Well, I, I would agree with the consensus, and I, I think a lot of this is, it might have been stuff that we've gone through before. But I, but I think what we've talked about is there are some things that, you know, I think we can, we need to give and take a little bit more on how the design, um, i- is done. So if it's been, if it's felt that it's been one design, and it was take it or leave it, you know, I think this is a time that we can bring the community together and ask everyone to come to the table and say, alright, what's, you know, what's your, you know, where can we give, where can you take? And that it's, it's something, and again, I know we've had the meetings and those types of things, but maybe at this point, it's something that we can come back and say, okay, here are some options, you know, what, what's okay, what's, you know, knocking it out of the park, and what's a deal breaker? And kinda give and take, because we do have, you know, unfortunately, we, we do have a community divided, and that's not our goal of this street. And so I would, you know, I think by going back, having different options, we could take those options, we can, and we could kind of, as a group, as a community, come to a consensus on what would be best. And again, not, not, just talk about the lanes, it's not, it's not all about the lanes, but talk about some other things, but have that give and take. And I think the only way we can do that is somewhat going, I don't wanna completely, I don't wanna spend a ton of money on, on a design. But I, I do think that we do need to look at some options and start some discussions again, so everyone feels heard.
What I'm hearing is, each one of you, not quite, oh, use my mic, sorry. What I'm hearing is that there is, it's two and a half years down the road, or whatever it's been, and that several of you are expressing the, the desire to, to look at this again and include the public once again in more of it, even though we acknowledge a lot of work has been done. So, um, Mr. DiToyo, were you wanting to?
So I wanna speak on the consensus, I agree with your consensus, and I, to address Ms. Wooden's comments, this isn't about the lights and, and that stuff. What we have to go back and talk to is, because we're gonna look at easements and right-of-way acquisitions, all the amenities and things were in the right-of-way before, and they're gonna have to be now on pri, private property, some of them. And so we're gonna have to go block by block and talk to those property owners and say, can we do an amenity zone here, can we get an easement here, can we do a light here, whatever it is? So that's the design, I, I'll say what I said in two thousand, and I'll say, I'll say it now, I don't care what the lights look like, I don't care what any of that stuff looks like, I want it to look nice. But my, my goal is that we have a street that's functional for everybody, and that, uh, we have no more division. And so I think we can get that by this consensus of having some different options about where we place things, the laneage, the turn, turn lanes, the bicycle lanes and all that. So that's why I'm, that's why I'm talking about redesign, not if we put a light here or there, it's just a matter of the bigger picture of how it's gonna lay out. And I think we should include Harlan West, because we don't wanna make Harlan to Pierce the red-haired, freckled stepchild and not have anything done in there, and save a few bucks, and then it's, it's not done. So I think Harlan West could be a smaller version of Pierce West, but I think we have to at least look at the sidewalks and things that we're gonna be doing between Harlan and Pierce, so it's, it's more uniform and consistent.
I agree with you that I want it to be a, a destination place, and it, that it looks nice. So what about what you just suggested is different than what we had done before? So if we go block to block and talk about right-of-way and what people might want in front of their, you know, in front of their business or their homes, um, I think we all know we're not gonna get agreement on, on that. So I, my question is, if we move forward with that, we're still gonna have some issues going forward. So what is our end vision that we're trying to create? Because that's something we have to think about as a council, what's our vision? Because if we're gonna go ask everybody, we'll get a lot of different suggestions along the way.
No, I think you're missing my point. Before, all of the changes were in the right-of-way. We, we weren't really having to deal with the property owners, because all the islands and the amenities and everything was gonna be in the right-of-way, 'cause we were moving the ri, the street in, it was gonna be on, on that area. Now we have to talk to the property owners about using some of their land possibly for some of these amenity zones, that's the difference. And I think, like I said, when we did this in two thousand, we had one property owner who fought it, but everybody else was willing to work with it. I mean, if you go, like I said, say you go to a business owner and say, uh, there was gonna be an amenity zone in the street, in the old, in the old plan, but now we're gonna maybe, can we put it on your property and we pay you, or there's an easement or a right-of-way acquisition, it's not that big of a deal. I, I think that we're gonna have a lot of buy-in from a lot of different people, you may get one or two businesses that still don't like it, but you're gonna have a better process, so we'll see. But I mean, I think right now, you can't, you have to go back and say, where do you wanna put these, these street features now, 'cause they're gonna be on potentially private property, so.
So I'm, so are you supporting what, are you against the road diet or for the road diet? Or previously, you had said that it didn't matter the number of lanes, as long as it looked nice? So are we speaking of, to the road diet at this point or not?
I'm asking for options, and I'm supporting his consensus.
Okay.
I've moved on from the road diet, it's, it's, it's two thousand fourteen news. And so what I'm asking for is, is backing his consensus to look at some different choices for Thirty-Eighth Avenue. And, um, it could be anything at this point, as long as the community's happy, I'm happy.
Okay, with that, um-
Do we have consensus?
We have consensus. Are you clear as to what we have consensus on? Yeah, I'm kinda confused myself.
Yeah, George, you wanna read what you got? Turn your mic on.
Excuse me, A, that we agree that we want to create a downtown or destination, uh, at Thirty-Eighth and, and Wads or thereabouts. Focus on pedestrian accessibility and getting people outside of their car. Look at multiple options for roadway design. Look at right-of-way acquisition as an option. Look at innovative design beyond what has already, what has already been presented. Look at consolidation of curb cuts. Allow staff, um, to do work as part of early design, but encourage them to ask for professional design services when necessary to take the next step. Look at sidewalk and pedestrian space and make sure that our design and the, and, and what we're trying to get out of that in, in terms of making a place is accomplished. And, um, look at ways to improve wayfinding and identification, um, for the street.
I think you missed lane options as far as bike lanes all the way through.
No, that, that's multiple options for the roadway design.
How about easements?
Right-of-way acquisition as an option, point number D.
Or easements, no, but easements are different than a right-of-way.
That's fine, that's fine, or, or easements.
I have easements, Mr. Toyo.
Is there anything as far as a cost factor in this, um, area, or we're just going to look at that when it occurs? As well as the cost of right-of-way acquisition?
We don't know what the costs are at this point, so we'll have to, um, investigate that, and that will be part of our, um, research and discussion when we come back to council on what, what costs looks like.
So we have an understanding consensus, certainly, Mr. Urban.
Oh, I just wanna clarification, so the consensus is made includes the intersection of Thirty-Eighth and Wadsworth. In the, uh, Thirty-Fifth Avenue corridor plan, the recommendation four point three dash thirteen that references the retail development and mixed-use development at Thirty-Fifth and Wadsworth, where, uh, a TIF is being currently considered, is that part of this consensus or segregated from this consensus?
Well, not specifically part of this consensus, but I'd ask Mr. Starker to clarify why he was focused on, on just making sure that Thirty-Fifth and Wadsworth was part of the focus.
Wadsworth Boulevard is the, is the main traffic carrier into our, into our city center. So when I, you know, we, we, I don't, I don't believe that you can really look at a, at a good, uh, city center design for Thirty-Eighth Avenue unless you, unless you realize the impacts of the larger carry, the larger volume street that's carrying forty or fifty thousand vehicles a day. And I don't think it has anything to do with any particular corner or piece of property in that, it's just that that, that Wadsworth corridor going through our city is the main, is the main feeder for bringing, bringing-
Okay, well, my, my concern here is, is that as written in the Thirty-Fifth Avenue corridor plan, the, the proposed or example design given in the corridor plan is near a mirror image of what is being proposed for the Walmart development. And so as much as we say we want to look at some different options, whatever gets stuck into the plan is what it's gonna be, or, or whatever we put forward is what it's going to be. So is this consensus focused east, uh, east of Wadsworth on Thirty-Fifth, or is it considering the entire intersection of Thirty-Fifth and Wadsworth? 'Cause that's a much bigger area.
East of Wadsworth.
Would that, would that provide your answer for you? Yeah, good.
Do I understand that what you primarily mean is that you would tie Wadsworth in as a visual connection to Thirty-Fifth, to point people to Thirty-Fifth? Is that what, the way you're envisioning that?
Well, yeah, I, you know, when you, when you look at what the Wadsworth Pell told- Well, yeah, you know, when you, when you look at what the Wadsworth Pell told us when we, when we looked at it, you know, we're going to have, you know, potentially new lane configurations. We've got an opportunity to bring signage in and, and wayfinding, and it contributes to the vitality of the whole district. But, you know, I think when we talk about 38th Avenue and a main street, we're not, we're not really going out into Wadsworth.
Okay.
There is one other question on here that is, as far as the survey is concerned, the citizen survey. Do we have some input as to this, the, what we have going if right now, the consensus, and how does that affect the survey? Would this be before or after the actual results from the survey?
Well, it, it seems to me like that we've got, you know, we've got some work that we can be doing. We've got the, we've got a survey that's going to come upon us in July or August or something and, and inform our decision-making to some degree, and I think we should, we should be able to factor that in as it comes in.
Okay.
Yeah, based on the consensus we received, we can, we can get started and I think the timing will work. When the survey results come in, that will help us refine or bring back more information.
So, we'll go forward with the consensus while the survey is cooking in the background and could be a part of the final? Okay. Oh, Jerry.
Well, I, I don't want to put a can of worms here, but I, I think that Pierce West was five lanes, and I don't think we should consider that as going back as an option. Five lanes, two S, two east, two west and the center turn lane. That's where your high speeds were. So, I would hope that in the design that the max lanes is four lanes, not a five-lane design. That's just my personal opinion. The five-lane design from Pierce West was a speed demons. You had the center turn lane plus two east and two west, and that did cause a lot of danger and speed. So, I would hope that we don't go, at least that we don't bring that option back from Pierce West as a five-lane option. I don't know how it feels about it, but I think four lanes would be the max, east and west, you know, two west and two east.
Okay. I believe we'll find out when that sign comes back. Are we done with this subject then? I believe we are. Let's move on to the, and thank you, every one of you for coming and speaking. We're moving on to the next subject, but I do, I know we all appreciate your input. And if you're going to leave, please do it quietly. Let's move on to the construction defects ordinance.
They're quiet. They're leaving quietly.
Well... Do we need a recess?
Do we need a recess? How long are you going to sit, Mr. Rolf?
I'm hearing mumblings that we need a break. Is this true, some of us? How many would like to have a 10-minute break? Raise your hand. Five-minute break. Five minutes. All the men are going to run off.
The Wheat Ridge Ordinance that you directed me to prepare, and after that is the existing Lakewood Ordinance, and they're quite similar. I did the memo to kind of outline sort of the broad outlines of what these ordinances are about, but, you know, we went over it last time in the study session, so you kind of have a pretty good sense, I think, of what's happening here, which is largely an effort to protect the construction builder community, design and builder community, from construction defect litigation, and instead to give them an opportunity to correct alleged defects and avoid litigation entirely. And sort of the second part of the, and there's a whole notice and cure process that we went over before, it's really not any different. I think I had the Lakewood Ordinance in front of you before, and so if you saw the Lakewood Ordinance, you saw this one. A couple sort of changes I think might be good. The second half of what's in here, it's probably a third of the text, is, well, what about HOAs? Homeowner associations and them bringing lawsuits. And you'll see that there's language in the Lakewood Ordinance, and thus in here, that constrains what HOAs can do in terms of removing or applying required arbitration provisions to, and you can't get rid of those. If you get rid of them, doesn't matter if there was a defect that was in place while one of those provisions was in place, then you've got to give that arbitration option. If you don't have association covenants that address that at all, you're still required as an HOA claimant to go through a notice and cure and arbitration process. The statute sets aside or delays the normal operation of the statute of limitations that would apply to litigation brought by persons against builders for the purpose of allowing this additional mediation arbitration fix the defect. And that's a protection to the design-build community. So that, and we went over largely that structure before, but let me make a couple of additional points based upon my conversations with Tim Cox, the Lakewood City Attorney, and some of the other stuff that I reviewed. Do I have an echo going on?
Yeah, I think I moved the mic, I think.
It's the minutes.
No, your mic isn't.
Really? You're right, it is that. Okay. All right. I have to stay really still. Only my mouth can move. Only, only, only the mouth can move. Right. Watch the mouth. Couple of things that I learned after talking to Tim Cox. I asked him, would you do anything different? And he said, no, not really. You see what my report is in the memo. He said that the city got a number of inquiries. There was at least one national builder that said they were, had seen the Lakewood Ordinance and were interested in maybe doing something, but nothing has happened yet. So that's what I learned from him. We saw ordinances from, what, Littleton and Lone Tree. Very similar. The differences are way down the food chain. I put them in the memo, but it's not significantly different than the Lakewood Ordinance. I think everybody took the Lakewood Ordinance and just went with it. One thing that I think needs to be further addressed and they're fixing this ordinance, let's point out to me by Ken, is a place in there where the ordinance says, all right, if you get to a certain point and you're allowed to go ahead and bring your lawsuit, you have to go through a notice process, and it refers you to the notice process that is set up for homeowner associations. And I think that's a little bit of a defect in the way their ordinance was written to begin with. It doesn't distinguish between individual claimants who just, you know, I've got a unit in a duplex, that's in a multifamily, you know, it's attached dwelling, there's no HOA involved, and I want to bring that construction defect lawsuit. This ordinance would apply to it, but it doesn't distinguish procedure-wise between an individual claimant like that, or a claimant in a multi, you know, unit development that just doesn't have an HOA at all. And it doesn't distinguish between those people and HOA association claimants, where there's a set of covenants that says, no, you know, construction, all construction defect litigation is done by the association. That's easy to fix, and I can, you know, find the kind of parallelism questions in here that would be, that I need to make changes on. I don't know if I need to bother you with those tonight. I proceed tonight as maybe questions and the go/no-go decision. You know, do you want to bring it forward, and do we do this or not? I did change some of the response dates for the builder to, I think, 30 days in a couple of places, but there's some shorter periods. I think there's a couple 14-day periods. I think there's still a 10-day period somewhere in the ordinance. I know that Mr. Starker had raised that, just in terms of the practical ability of a developer builder to respond in that amount of time, and I'm completely open what you want to instruct me there. I also got a question from Councilmember Fitzgerald about the majority voting requirement in the HOA context, where the HOA, you know, board, or the homeowner, excuse me, vote, you know, 50% to bring the lawsuit. His concern was that sort of protecting maybe a minority of owners that would, would or would not want to bring that lawsuit. I think you could probably, you'd have to write it into the section on the HOA to figure out how to protect the, or establish a right for a smaller number of owners to either, you know, bring suit early or not, and sort of make their own decision in kind of a sub-area context, if you had a development that could be divided up in that way somehow. You know, maybe it's a three, three-building development, and there's 10 units in every each building. And so you could conceivably structure it so that the voting requirement would be by building by building as opposed to the entire 30 units. It'd be, you know, voting a majority of the 10. And I think you could probably do that, but only where the underlying fact pattern allowed it. And so you'd have to sort of articulate it in the ordinance to say, in the event, you know, here's the 50% rule. In the event, however, that the claim arises in the context of a separate building in a multi-building development, then the rule is this. And you could do that. There may be other questions, but I've spoken enough. So if you have questions or concerns, let me know. And Ken Johnston looked through it carefully and found some things that I will want to fix in terms of how it reads, including this business about distinguishing between a single claimant and an HOA claimant, just so we know the rules apply to both, but the language has to be a little different because you, an HOA is a bunch of voting involved and not so with an individual claimant.
I have Mr. Starker over here.
I've got it. I sort of have a number of things. So did you have something that you wanted to?
Well, you may address them, so go ahead.
Okay. Just kind of on a few things. In your definition of homeowner, homeowner means any person who owns a unit in a condominium or planned community. Would that, would that apply to a person that bought a single-family residence in a development? The development being a planned community, sort of like incarnation or something like, you know, some, and that's not the one I'm thinking. I'm thinking of the other fireside or, okay, so there's, so there's 10 single-family homes in a, in a unit, in a community.
Mr. Starker.
And you, you used what Lakewood used.
I did, but I think you're right. I think it conceivably applied to that. If we're talking about all attached construction, then we probably want to make a change.
I think, I think really talking about attached multifamily.
Yes.
And I think somehow multifamily, to me, ought to be in there, whether it's a condominium or a townhouse or another form of ownership.
I think that's a really good change. I think that's been everyone's assumption.
Okay.
But you're right, assumptions kill you when you go and see if it's actually written down.
It's just, it's in the details. What can I say?
Okay.
Back under notice, where we have the notice provisions for the claimant.
What page?
Oh, I'm going to think it's probably page 56, but, you know.
Oh, his.
Yeah.
Is there a number?
Yeah, code section number?
Section 26, 1305A. We're talking about the claimant's notice. And the claimant's going to provide his name and address and the claim. Why doesn't the claimant provide, if he has an attorney, why doesn't he provide that information in the notice, rather than putting it to the builder to try to figure out whether he's got an attorney that he needs to respond to?
Certainly could require it.
I, you know, then you know who's returning, you know, otherwise, how's he going to find out?
It may be that, and I'm happy to include it.
Okay.
It may be that the thinking was, this is a claimant who hasn't talked to an attorney yet. And in one sense, you, you don't want that. You want not to get the lawyers involved, and you want the defect to be fixed.
So, so then you say, if they're, if the claimant has an attorney, then he needs to list it. And then you don't have to put it on the builder to try to figure out whether he's got an attorney or not.
Fair enough.
Because you say that the builder, the notice, so this is little A under one.
Right.
The notice shall be sent to the claimant, and to any attorney the builder knows to be representing the claimant.
Fair enough.
Okay.
I follow that.
So get rid of that.
Okay.
Thank you. And so we also have, in provision number two, you say that the builder has to maintain an agent for notice within this, with the Secretary of State. So he needs either to be a corporation, or an LLC, or some other type of entity that requires him to register with the state?
Again, where are you? Oh, you're number two. Okay.
I'm number two.
I'm there, okay. Yes, you're, there are some builders that, for whatever reason, aren't organized in corporate sense that they don't need to register. Is that what you're saying?
So they don't get, they don't get benefit of this piece of legislation? If they're a sole proprietor or a partnership or for some reason?
Well, no, it's just an obligation of the builder, is to maintain an agent.
A builder has to do all of the things that you say, right?
Yes.
So he has to, he has to maintain?
We could certainly add, maintain an agent for notice with the car Secretary of State if required, as a consequence of the builder's corporate structure, something like that. In other words, if you are a builder, however, with a corporate structure, that would otherwise require you to register with the Secretary of State.
Well, then you need to have a certificate of good standing with the Secretary of State, or?
Uh, no, it just says you maintain an agent.
Well, I mean, that's what Lakewood says. I don't understand why, why you would need to have that.
I'm guessing that if it does come to the, if it does come to this point in time in which the unit owner is released from the arbitration cure, you know, restrictions in the, in the ordinance, and is then free to bring suit, then this maybe represents, I'm thinking out loud, but maybe represents some balance that got negotiated into the ordinance to say, okay, if you jump through all those hoops and you still are not happy, and you do have the right to bring suit, you ought to know who to, you ought to know, you know, who to, who to notify if you're going to bring that lawsuit on behalf of the, who at the, on the builder's side to sue. Kind of helps you bring that lawsuit if you've jumped through all the hoops preparatory to bringing it. I'm making this up. I mean, I'm guessing that that's the policy.
The counterargument is that if I'm a builder and I don't have an agent for notice with the Secretary of State, then I can't avail myself of this piece of legislation.
Well, you're not in full compliance with the legislation would be.
But don't I have to do each and every element in here?
You do.
So if I don't do one element, then I can't avail myself of the statute.
Can we make this easier by changing this to say, I mean, you can either delete it or you can make it easier by changing it to say, maintain an agent for notice with the car to Secretary of State if required as a result of the builder's corporate structure? Because if you're required to do that anyhow, as a result of your corporate structure, then it's no harm. It's no foul. It's no burden to do so. Or we just eliminate it.
How about adding a section that if, that you maintain a relationship with the homeowners' association during the warranty period?
You can, although in some, in some cases, there may not be an owners' association.
Maintaining a relationship.
Just, just so they know what your, your address is, you know, and where, how to get ahold of you.
I mean, I, you're.
I think it could be solved in a manner of saying, the Secretary of State's office and/or the city clerk's office, as long as there's some type of contact information made available on the entity involved, whether that's an individual, a corporation, what have you, that the concept is, we want to be able to find you if we need you.
I, I think that that's, that's right.
Okay. Well, the claimant needs to send, send a certified letter or personal service, so it's up to the claimant to figure out how to serve the builder. Find it if you can.
Right, but the benefit there is, is that we put them in a place where we can find them.
Yeah. And I, so I think if you want to say required by the Secretary of, by the form of organization, that's fine.
Mr. Pond wants to add something in discussion.
Well, if you go back up to, to the beginning of this paragraph, it says, after receding, receiving notice of a potential construction defect, not before, after, the builder must, must do each of the following. So I, I think if we just kind of ask, is this unreasonable after receiving a potential, a notice of, it's not before? I mean, to me, it seems reasonable that, you know, after they've been provided notice, and they're in this process now, that they need to maintain some sort of contact. And what they're saying in, in here is that contact should come through the Secretary of State. I mean, to me, then, the question would be, does everyone have that opportunity? Not, you know what I mean? In other words, I don't think this is, this is unreasonable, but maybe you're a business from out of state, you know, and you don't, you're not incorporated. I don't know. I mean, can you comply with this after, after you've been given notice? And if the answer is yes, then I don't think this is unreasonable, if, if there's.
That's, that's a good point, that you may be out of state.
Yeah.
And so not only are you going to try to respond to the, to the complainant with a repair, you know, and investigation and possibly a repair, but now another thing on your hit list is, oh, God, I got to go get incorporated as a, in the state of Colorado.
It's not saying incorporated, it's saying.
Or, or.
You have to maintain an agent.
Maintain an agent for notice, so.
Again, I'm not, I'm assuming that that's a real thing. I don't know. But I mean, if it, if.
Well, you can make it, I mean, honestly, you can make it. I agree with what Mr. Pond is saying. This isn't really triggered in the lesson until there's been some problem and you're in the process. But I get it that not everyone needs to or can or should register with the car to Secretary of State. So maybe we, we don't focus on that so much as what it's here for, which is if, once you're in the process, tell me how to contact you. Is, I think, how do I get ahold of you, is what this is trying to communicate. So maybe.
You could certainly, you know, provide in the builder's response, an affirmation, you know, on contact information.
Sure. Name and address of the contact person for notices under this ordinance. How's that?
Perfect.
Okay. Fair enough. Let's consider that done.
Okay. On number four, you talk about documents being made on-site. What, what does that mean?
Just a minute. Probably it's a fancy way of saying, your copying costs that you incur at your office, where you, the builder are, where these documents are located. I don't think there's any magic in, on-site, you know?
Well, I'm going to, okay, so then I'm the builder, and I'm.
Oh, you're saying to the owner, you have to come to my location to make these copies.
And bring your copier.
Yeah.
You want to, you want to copy the plans.
Right.
Thirty-six by forty-two.
Yep.
Bring your, bring your copier because you can't take them out of my building.
Yeah, I think that's, and occasionally I've had to advise cities about that. If there's only one copy of a document, a subject to the Open Records Act, and the Secretary of State's office does that occasionally, they will require people to show up with their own copier. Doug Bruce showed up with his own copier a couple times.
Is it a copier, or we're going to charge you? I mean, I'm in the healthcare business, and if you ask for copies of your medical records, we could charge you for your copies. I think, isn't that kind of how it is? If it's going to cost me X dollars to do a site plan or whatever, then that, the claimant has to incur that cost.
Yes, and, and that's what this is. Either you pay.
Not necessarily that I have to pay my own copier.
No, it, these, these are may, not shalls here.
But may I, may I suggest there be a maximum? Some, I think the state actually has a law about the maximum cost of a copy.
But that's really the open records issue.
Yeah. Well, why don't we add a maximum cost?
Is, is, I guess the question I have is, is this a problem to begin with, and does it need solving?
Well, it may, it may not, but if you, you know, the builder can comply to make copies at a reasonable charge, that's good. And may require the copies of the documents to be made on-site, and I would assume that that's on-site at the builder, where the builder's copies reside.
Yep, that's my sense. Yeah. I get that same sense.
And I think the word reasonable is in there, so that kind of.
Yeah. You had called on that before.
I can change on-site to builder's location.
Yeah.
Which is a little less technical.
Okay.
Fair enough.
Works good to me.
Let's keep going.
Now, I have, I have a general question about tolling on the statute of repose and the statute of limitation. And is it your, is it your thought that only the repair work would toll, and that the statute of limitation and the statute of repose on the other work in the project would not toll, or that the whole project tolls?
That's a good question. I think, first, let's remember what those statutes are. You know, you have X years to bring your lawsuit.
Right.
And this for the benefit of the group. And if, if I send a notice to you, hey, you got to fix this builder, then, then the clock doesn't keep ticking on my time to sue you. You know, it, it is told, it is frozen, and so my, if I, if I had two years or if I had, you know, one year and 99 days, I still got one year and 99 days until we kind of figure out if this process is going to work. If it doesn't work, then I'm free to sue the builder, and I've still got my hundred, my year and 99 days. And then it starts ticking down. That's what's at work here. But the question is, well, does the clock on my action keep ticking down with respect to things other than, right, what are the subject, those that are the subject of the notice? I would say yes, but I'd also say that number seven doesn't make that distinction at all. And I think it's fine to, because honestly, if there's some other thing that I, as the homeowner, didn't pull it together to send my notice about, I shouldn't get the protection for the back porch that I didn't send a notice on, if I sent a notice on the front porch or on the bathroom upstairs. I think it should only extend, the tolling operation here should only extend to the.
To the corrective, to the, to the alleged claims.
To the alleged, alleged claim, yeah. There's no problem with that.
I would ask you to kind of make that.
All right.
And then I notice at twenty-six, thirteen oh-seven, you're looking for a two-year guarantee on the, on the repair work?
Jerry Dong isn't looking for it. It's, it's, the draft is.
Well, that, Lakewood, Lakewood looked for two years, so.
A lot of you is going on here, and all I'm doing is, you guys told me, you guys told me, bring us the Lakewood Ordinance, and I did. But yes, it's a two-year warranty.
One year? No, why two years?
Why not?
Because typically builders provide a one-year warranty.
Well, no, but we're, we're there, I think, since, because they're getting the opportunity to build in the city, and they have this protection, they should, they should be gladly to do a two-year warranty, because they're getting a protection that they don't have right now.
I agree with that.
If, if something, if the, if the builder is confident that his job is not going to fail within one year, then he should be confident it's not going to fail within two years.
So is the question whether to change this to two, from two years to one year?
I have a question.
Okay. We need some other opinions here. Mr. Pond, please?
Yeah, I, well, I agree that it's, two-year period is not a normal period, so I would, I would expect that that would be, you know, that's not, it's not common. So, I mean, I would be okay with one, and if we leave it at, at two, I guess, we'll just have to see where it goes. But a one-year warranty is typical for work.
But George, they're, they're getting a benefit here, so I think a two-year warranty makes sense in this case. The builder's getting a benefit of correction before a lawsuit.
Okay. But, wait a minute.
Yes, Mr. Urban.
So the Lakewood Ordinance currently has what length?
It's got two. Two.
Okay. You guys are considering a one-year because that's what's normally provided, or what? Do we have any indication of why Lakewood went with a two-year?
We don't. We don't.
Sometimes public works projects where you have curb and gutter and other, you know, drainage ways, and in the public works arena, two years is, is part of the, is sometimes standard. It's, it's more, you know, one year, Mr. Pond's right, one.
I think that's a pretty good, that's actually a good guess.
But in the, you know, and Ken, you may.
Yes, that's our requirement. We require all public improvements to be warranted for two years.
I would.
Private homeowner stuff.
I think if it's not going to make or break anything, we could go with what was being done in Lakewood, to the point of continuing to try to make this as uniform as possible across multiple jurisdictions. I think that weighs heavily in my decision-making process to make sure that we're sticking as close to the, the, the policy that's being drafted amongst multiple cities in order to have a combined effect of encouraging this type of development across the metro area. And that would be my overriding concern over trying to differentiate one and two years.
So, um-
On this one, maybe a consensus.
We're gonna need a consensus on this one.
Before we do that, I'd like to say that, uh, the loan tree, I really like the loan tree addition, which is, which allows people to come to an agreement, uh, so that a, a claimant and a builder can come to a mutually agreeable decision. And so I think we ought to add the loan tree, um, agreement clause.
Does that apply to the one-year, two-year?
Doesn't, it doesn't change the one-year, two-year. I, I agree that it's, it's, uh, it's a good addition. If the parties agree and want to exit the process, dynamite, you know? Uh, but it's mutual agreement. I don't see a downside to, to that.
Have, we haven't seen, have we seen that?
It's just-
It's in the memo.
We haven't seen the, the whole thing, but it's just, uh, that's the gist of it.
Yeah. When I did a side-by-side comparison between this ordinance and loan tree, rather than giving you a loan tree ordinance, I thought, let's see what's different. And it was so much the same, I thought I'd rather put it in the memo, which I did. But that brings us, and I'm happy to add that. I think that's, that's an easy one, unless there's objection. Uh, you know, if the parties are gonna agree and want to exit the process, God love it, they should do it.
I had just one, one or two more things, and-
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Starker. Did we complete this, uh?
One or two years.
No, just, let's just ask for a consensus to keep it at two years.
Yeah. That's okay.
I'm not, I'm not voting for it.
It really doesn't change anything that's here. All right, go ahead.
Was that the consensus? It stays at two?
Leave it, leave it at two.
All right.
You can change it on the dais.
That's, that's always available.
Did anybody-
Give it up!
Did anybody hear that?
That is, that's always available. That's, you know, that's the way the process works. I'm cool with that.
It's, it's bad, you know, it's bad.
Okay.
Now, back in, back in your language on twenty-six thirteen oh-nine, which, which sort of goes to the ability of the HOA to change their declarations.
Yeah.
This is real, this is real lawyer. Lawyerish. I mean, this was sort of maximum lawyerish. Does this, does this-
It's a tough night for lawyers, isn't it?
Does this co- does this coincide with the, with the, the Court of Appeals decision that came down, and I want to say it was Velagio or something versus Metropolitan Homes last week, or the week before?
It does.
Where they can't, um, it, it essentially means they can't, that they can't, uh, agree to delete arbitration or mediation or ADR from their declarations. Or if they, if they do, it looks like the way that you wrote it is-
It's not effective as regards, yeah.
For a defect claim.
It does, and I'll tell you that that case, while it wasn't really as, I think this language actually goes further, because in that case, you had the original developer declarant who had rights that were embedded in the, in the covenants that the court chose to recognize. And, um, you don't always have that fact pattern. So I, I felt that that case really was a little more specific to its facts than kind of the general approach that is taken here. And while it sounded good, and everyone liked the outcome, or the, you know, the outcome was favorable, to, to write this paragraph, kind of mirroring that case, would not be the right thing to do. And instead, this is more general language that I think is more protective.
That's good. And then my last question, for this round, was, what, what's the recourse, or what happens if the claimant interferes with the repairs, or doesn't allow the repairs to be done? Or, I mean, back in twenty-six thirteen oh-six A and B, um, he, he needs to cooperate, he needs to schedule with the builder.
Yep.
And, you know, if he doesn't promptly cooperate, the builder to schedule, what happens? Does he then lose, does he lose his, um-
Yeah.
His rights under this, or does he go scot-free, or?
I, I think, I saw that too. It's, it's probably fair to say that the builder's obligations are really clearly defined here and, and pretty detailed, and the property owner's obligations are less, are less so. And, you know, they've gotta make the property available, reasonably cooperate, not get in the way of the builder, and schedule the builder to come. But there's not a, okay, what happens if you don't? Whereas there is a, here's what happens if you don't, on the builder's side. It, I think would be fine to, 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 in the same place, say if the claimant, you know, fails to reasonably cooperate in the ways that are described, then the claimant loses the, the protections of the, of the, of, you know, of the bill as well, although the protections are, are, you know, um-
He's free to file a lawsuit against the builder, or then he's precluded against it?
Yeah, that's the problem, you know? Uh, what, what, how do you, how do you punish a, punish is the wrong word, but you know, how, what is the consequence that you could levy on a, on a claimant who, who eventually is gonna be, maybe you say you're, you're not free to bring your suit. Uh, if, if, if the builder, I'm making this up, if the builder feels you have not reasonably complied, then you're not free to bring your suit unless and until you've convinced, I don't know, an arbitrator, that your failure to, to, uh, cooperate was reasonable. That, that's the best I can do with that. And you see the problem I have, which is-
Ah.
It's hard to write that. You're wrestling yourself into a, a mind argument that isn't necessarily there, because the, the person, the, the homeowner is precluded from acting in that manner in order to preserve his ability to resolve the issues that he himself brought up. To be self-destructive is to be self-destructive, and they're going, that's gonna play out in the arbitration, it's gonna play out in a future lawsuit, so that the homeowner would, just by their, their own selfish nature, be precluded from acting in those ways, because it would keep them from sustaining their own ability to file suit later on, I would assume.
I'm not, I'm not sure that there, I can, I can visualize cases that I, you know, I don't want to see those guys ever again, you know?
Sure.
I'm tired of the water coming in, I don't have faith in the repairs, I, you know, I, I don't want them to, to repair my property. Um, I'm not sure, to Mr. Dahl's point, that there's a, there's a good way to do that.
Uh-huh.
And maybe the way to do it is not to speak to it, and then see where, see where it goes. You know? Yeah.
But I think there's something to that element, that, uh, a homeowner is going to want to resolve this in an amicable way to begin with, and then if that isn't amicable, then it goes to a lawsuit.
Yeah.
And then whatever actions each one took to that point are gonna play into the outcome of that lawsuit.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Uh, I would like to make a consensus, but before I do, uh, I would like permission to suspend the rules, because we have a builder here who has something he'd like to say about this, if he wants to talk. Uh, so I guess we would have to decide to suspend the rules.
That would be a council decision, whether we'd like to-
I'd be okay for three minutes.
Supermajority, six votes, as I recall.
Okay.
For three minutes.
Yeah, that was the-
Which is our typical-
The motion to suspend.
Mr. Myers? Yep, please, or you could-
Oh, sit at the table.
Sit at the table, please.
Have a seat. Just don't rattle your microphone.
Well, first, I felt like I've had a seat at the table at Wheat Ridge for a long time. I really appreciate all your support for our project, and we just think things couldn't have gone better with the city in, in every aspect, so thank you very much for that. Um, there were a couple things I wanted to say. First of all, thank you for considering this. Um, I think we've all read about the inability to get state legislation done on this, and it's gratifying to see the cities where we, we build try to tackle this. Loan Tree did this kind of for us. We have an eighty-unit townhome project down there that we're just breaking ground on. And so, um, we're grateful to them, we're grateful to you for considering it. Uh, the one thing that I, if I'm in your shoes, I'll try to take my builder hat off to the extent that I can, but, you know, what's the right thing to do here? And the right thing to do is to protect the rights of an individual homeowner to get his house fixed if there's a problem. And, um, what all of these efforts are really geared, uh, towards is, uh, first of all, when there is a large number of homes that are affected, and thus multifamily, that's a class action lawsuit that's attractive to plaintiff's lawyers. So most of these efforts are geared to that situation. And one of the unintended consequences of class action lawsuits is that a person can own a unit in one of these developments, not know of the filing of a class action lawsuit, and being unable to sell his unit while there's the penancy of the case. And that's, uh, is the case with Fannie Mae, Freddie Mac, and FHA loans. So a lot of this is, uh, to prevent action by a board without knowledge of the, the members of the association. So that's what all this majority stuff is about. Um, it, it has to go to a vote. It can't happen accidentally. A homeowner can't be unaware of it, and everybody decides to go into it with their eyes open, recognizing that a lot of money's gonna go to lawyers, and it'll, and it's possible that you'll have a hard time selling your house during the penancy of it. That's something to protect homeowners, really. Um, you know, from our standpoint, uh, what we cherish the most is our right to cure. If there's a problem, we want the ability to go into the house and fix it. And believe it or not, that is not always what plaintiff's attorneys want. What they really want is the big judgment. And so arbitration is a way to have an expert look at the case and get to a much cheaper resolution of it. That's what all this binding arbitration language is about. And so, um, all of the things that you're talking about, I think, are, are valid. I wish I had Bud to review my documents. It seems like he's done a great job of, of looking through this one. Um, there's one other aspect that I don't know that it needs to be in an ordinance, but, uh, some of the advice that, uh, we've heard given to the city of Denver, is it the ability to put a plat note on a plat that describes, uh, what this ordinance means, uh, can be a really important, uh, thing. First of all, to put everybody on notice, it's in the public record that way, and subsequent, uh, owners will, will know it, and it'll be in the title report, uh, so that's important. Uh, but beyond that, and I'm just gonna shoot straight with you, it's really hard to change a plat note. And so if you want arbit- an arbitration clause to survive, uh, retraction or amendment, uh, by, uh, association, a good way to do it would be on a plat note. So I just wanted to share all of that. The main reason I'm here is, thank you for considering this. It is a real issue, it's costly. Um, we had lunch the other day, and I want to say, we're spending about twelve thousand dollars a unit that we otherwise wouldn't necessarily need to spend. And it's, it's part of the affordability issue on multifamily, because we have to be paid for that. So, um, I'll confess that part of it has really made us a better builder, and every other builder. Um, the fact that these lawsuits happen and have succeeded in massive judgments has caused all of us to be extra, extra, extra vigilant, and that's not a bad thing. So, um, I appreciate your balanced support, I appreciate what you're doing, and, uh, it's really a rare, uh, blessing to be in a city that has been so responsive, that has embraced what we do, and that is here to support us. So thank you very much.
Thank you. That was very helpful. Thank you, Mr. Fitzgerald, for suggesting that.
So I would like to, uh, ask for a consensus that we direct Mr. Dahl to bring us another version that incorporates all of the, uh, changes and additions that we've talked about, uh, including plat notes, uh, the plat note item, the loan tree addition, um, and the language that you, or some language that describes what you were talking about earlier that is a protection for the minority.
Right.
Well, the only thing I would like to see is that be drafted and go to the planning commission for the public process, and I don't think we have to wait another two weeks for it. So I'd be willing to do that, but go to the, start the process now, go into planning commission, and then come back to city council.
It's, uh, chapter twenty-six, so by the, you know, code, it will go to them.
Automatically.
Anyhow, automatically.
All right.
The plat note ordinance is a separate ordinance, correct? That's not-
That was why I didn't mention it, be- because it, it looked to me like it was, it's on my list of things here, but I didn't know whether you wanted to deal with it separately as, because it's more sort of a public works, you know, and-
Yeah, it's typically found in our subdivision regulations where we have that. And I, uh, looked carefully through the Douglas County Land Use Code, and I looked at all of their required certifications, and it is not, I couldn't find it.
Can't find it?
Um, I'm told RVADA either has something, or-
All right.
But I need to do more outreach to find somebody that'll show that to me.
Okay. And I, I've put inquiries out and haven't gotten in yet.
Yeah. I think it'd be fairly short, and I'm happy to do it, and, and it wouldn't be, it's up to you, but it wouldn't be the end of the world to accompany a revised version of this ordinance to the planning commission, along with, uh, a plat note ordinance. Uh, and it's short enough that once you get it from the planning commission at first reading, if you don't like it, you can delete it, you can change it. On first reading, we can, it's not a public hearing on first reading, so that allows us to have some changes that, for lack of a better term, are kind of a study session on first reading. If you have to do that, I don't see that that's at the end of the world.
So I revise my request for a consensus to include, uh, those things, a separation of the plat note, and going to the planning commission.
Mr. Dahl, did you hear that? They go directly to the planning commission with the plat note? That's what he's proviso- okay.
Did, did you have, was there anything else that you had, though, bud?
Did he want-
There's ten, ten things, but no, okay.
Yeah.
Good.
He's gonna do it on the dais.
Yeah. Uh, before we vote on that consensus, was anybody else wanted to add anything or have any questions regarding the draft before us?
Uh, Mr. Johnstone has gone through, uh, the ordinance and found a few things as well, that I'm gonna correct, uh, but, but, uh, they're, they're things I think he, they're good suggestions. I'll make those two, uh, and they add to value. Were there, did you have-
Well, no, I was wanting on the consensus to go forward.
I do have a question, um, probably minor. Under twenty-six thirteen oh-six, item C, in the last sentence, the builder may elect to modify the proposed in accordance with the claimant's objection, or may proceed with the scope of work set forth in the original pros- proposal. The reason I'm questioning that is that, um, it sounds like that if there's a written objection to the proposal, that the builder can, uh, ignore that objection and may proceed.
Good question.
And I'm, I'm curious about the protection of the consumer, of the, obviously the owner.
Need some comments on this section to Mr. Dahl as well, and I think, you know, at the end of the completion of repairs, they, the claimant doesn't have to accept those repairs, right?
Right.
So they can say, um, you know, we actually, so whether it was a scope of work that they agreed to, or a scope of work that they didn't agree to, they have some form of relief. My comment at the end of the day was it directs you to twenty-six thirteen ten to see what that relief is, and that's the homeowners' association relief process, which is a bit of a disconnect that we'll figure out. But, but I think that's the quick answer, is that they still have an avenue of relief, whether it's a scope of work for the repair that they agreed to, or that they didn't agree to.
Okay. That, that's what I was wanting to make sure happened.
And, and I'm glad Ken pointed out that, as drafted, it does make a good distinction between an individual claimant and an HOA association claimant, and I'm gonna, I'll create some definitions, and then we'll see some parallels and through the ordinance, so that if you're an individual claimant, you know what your path is, and if you're an association claimant, you know what your path is.
Okay.
All right.
Can we therefore have a vote on the consensus? Looks like we're good on this.
Okay, thanks.
Great. Thank you for all your work on this, Mr. Dahl.
You bet.
And, Mr. Starker. Uh, we'll do a quick run around the table on official, elected officials' reports. J- Janelle's not here. Ms. Wooden, do you have anything for us? Ms. Davis? Mr. Starker? Uh, Ms. Fitzgerald, I want to thank you for getting that information back to us on the Wheat Ridge Business District, as to what the previous funds had gone to. You had gotten right on that. Thank you. Mr. DeTulio? Nope. Mr. Urban? Mr. Urban?
Mr. Elbow.
And George has something.
I'll have to wait for everyone to sit back down, though. I'll wait, though, as long as it takes. I failed to get this word out last Monday, and I apologize, but on June 9th, 7:00 p.m. at the REC Center, we will have a gathering and a public meeting regarding Discovery Park, so we want to welcome everyone who has an interest in that and can help us, you know, look at what are, what's going on there, and move forward, and, and make the park a great, great place. So we'll, we'll get that on the website, I believe, but again, June 9th, 7:00 p.m. at the REC Center, we're going to have a public meeting that discusses the issues and solutions at Discovery Park. And, coming to a district near you, District 3, we're having a coffee with council on this Saturday at 9:30 to 11 o'clock at, in the Carnation Room of the REC Center, for District 3.
District 3.
District 3, thank you.
On that 6-9 meeting, the public is invited, of course, and that is involving, you said Discovery Park, and, and we're discussing the damage that's been doing to Discovery, Discovery Park, is that correct?
Yeah, I, I mean, I think it's a chance for everyone to, to bring their issues forward on, on what's happening at Discovery Park, but maybe more importantly, looking at solutions moving forward.
Great, appreciate a lot of public input on that, and I believe that's it for tonight. Thank you all very much for your job, well done.